Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Planning Board for Monday, February 25th. Town of Barnstable, hearing room, second floor. Seven o'clock is the start of our Planning Board meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and introduce the members and the staff. And I'll start from my left.
Fred LaSalva.
Good evening and welcome. Jeffrey Schwartz.
Mary Barry.
Steve Costello.
Patrick Foran.
Walter Watson.
And staff?
Paul Wackrow, Planning and Development.
Karen Heron, Planning and Development.
And Elizabeth Jenkins will also be joining us. Notice of this, notice of recording, the meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Chair must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting, and to please make their presence known if so. Seeing none, we're going to move right into the agenda. We've got a lot on the agenda tonight, so I thought I would reorder things a little bit to make it hopefully a little bit more efficient. We're going to take care of some of the quick business first, and then address new business, and then address the old business. So what I'd like to do is address the Approval Not Required first, and then the zoning amendment, and then move on to the regulatory agreement for the T-Mobile site, and then move to the special permit for Zero Engine House Road and Nine Engine House Road, and end with the regulatory agreement for 268 Stevens Street. Knowing that we have a lot on the agenda, I'm going to ask on the last item, which is the 268 Stevens Street, is that we will open the public hearing, we'll hear the presentation by the applicant, but I will ask to forego board discussion, questions, and public comment until our next meeting. So that hopefully will help if anybody is here to discuss that particular project. Public hearing will be open at the next meeting. Okay, with that, I'll move right into the first item, which is the Approval Not Required Plans. Lawrence Hollings, which is 1254 Santuit Newtown Road, Kettuit, has submitted a plan entitled Approval Not Required Plan, drawn and stamped by Joel R. Cubic PLS at Holmes &amp; McGrath, dated February 14, 2019. I'll ask for a presentation by the applicant, and we'll have board discussion, just for people to know that there's not a public hearing on this, and then we'll ask for a motion. So is the applicant here? We can see if we have an easel. Do we have an easel that he could just hold on for one second? We'll just get you an easel, and then you could start.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, actually, if you wanted to start before, if you're ready to start, we can do that.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Patrick Roach. I work for Holmes &amp; McGrath, and we are representing the applicant, Lawrence Hollings. Subject property is, there's actually two properties. It's Lot 2A and 2B on Santuit Newtown Road. The applicants are seeking to create parcel A, and which would be conveyed to Lot 2B, and that would create Lot 2C. And the subject properties, Lot 2A and 2B. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
They are subject to a zoning vote of appeals decision. The original subdivision plan was created in 1997, and at that time, there was a ZBA decision that allowed for the reduction of the lot frontage from 150 feet to 120 feet. In that decision, there was an item that said that Lot 2B was not to be subdivided. February 13 of 2019, the applicants applied to modify that original special permit and variance to allow for the creation and conveyance of parcel A. The board, zoning board of appeals, did approve that decision. They found that the lots were large enough, and that the creation of parcel A was small enough, and that it wouldn't be detrimental to the neighborhood. So the applicant is seeking your endorsement for the Approval Not Required Plan.
Great, thank you. Any discussion or questions for the applicant? None? Okay. I'll ask for a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve as written, Madam Chair.
Second?
Second that, please.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And the next item on the agenda is a zoning amendment, Town Council Item Number 2019-092. And this is amending the zoning map of the Town of Barnstable, Massachusetts, to amend and expand Residence C District to include the entity of 306 West Bay Road, Osterville, which is identified in the assessor's map, which is 116 as parcel 014. And this is going to be, we will have a public hearing, we'll ask for comments from the attendees, we'll also hear from the presenter, ask for public comment, close the public hearing, and then we'll move forward with some sort of a vote. So first, I'd like a motion to open the public hearing.
Like to make a motion to open the public hearing, Madam Chair.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, the public hearing is now open. We'll ask for a presentation from Attorney Schultz.
Yes, thank you. My name is Albert Schultz, and I represent the property owner, Mark Curley. The property is at 306 West Bay Road. It's up on the map. That property includes both Marine Business A2, where the arrow is, 2,900 square feet, and Residence C District. This zoning amendment seeks to expand the Residence C District to include the entirety of the 2,900 square feet. I've provided a copy of the map, and also a copy of, a picture of the cottage that is presently on the premises. It was conveyed in 1951 from Crosby Yacht to the owner of the property to the east, and in 1998, it was conveyed to the owner of 306. In 1998, it was also, the shed was rehabbed into a cottage, and it's been a cottage since then. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions by the board of the applicant? No? Fred? Okay. We don't have any questions at this point. I'll ask for if there's any public comment, and if so, please come up and address the board. Okay? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public comment.
Can I make a motion to close the public comment, Madam Chair?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Public comment is closed, and we'll ask for a recommendation as to a vote, whether we want to move this forward to the Town Council.
Can I make a motion that we approve this as written?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
This will go to the Town Council. Okay, following with what I had spoke about with reorganizing the agenda, the next item is the regulatory agreement, Number 2019-01, which is T-Mobile Northeast LLC and South Congressional Church, Congregational Church Incorporated, seeks into a regulatory agreement with the Town of Barnstable to install a personal wireless service facility within the South Congregational Church on the property of 565 Main Street, Centerville. The personal wireless service facility consists of six wireless communications antennas within the church steeple, together with an apparant equipment within the steeple and in the basement of the church. All of the antennas are installed out of view behind the belfry louvers, walls, and steeples. The property is developed with a 2,200-square-foot church building, a 4,613-square-foot church annex, and a 1,307-square-foot house, and a 1,110-square-foot shed. The property is zoned CVD, which is Centerville Village District, and DCPC, which is District of Critical Planning Concern. Shown on assessor's map 207 as parcel 053, the total land area of the lot is approximately 1.3 acres, sorry, 1.38 acres. And this is a continuation from the February 11 meeting. As a reminder, the public hearing is already open. It's been open. I'll inquire if there's any updates from the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Ricardo Souza, on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile. I don't have any additional information. It was my understanding that the purpose of this hearing was to have the consultant from Citiescape come before the board, try to answer any questions that the board may have regarding the report that was submitted, the peer review report that was submitted reviewing our application. I did not submit any additional information between our last hearing and this hearing. The board also asked that representatives, or a representative of the church, the landlord, also be present at this hearing, and in fact, Attorney Jessica Powell is here tonight. She represents the church, and she'd like an opportunity to submit some remarks to the board in response to your request. And just for the record, representatives of the church have been here at every hearing, not only with the Planning Board, but also the zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Would she like to place those remarks now, before?
At the pleasure of the board.
Why don't we do that now, before we have the Citiescape consultants speak?
That'd be fine. Thank you.
That would be great.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Jessica Powell of Nunnar McLennan &amp; Fish. I'm attorney for South Congregational Church, and I am here at the request of and on behalf of the congregation's leadership. I thank you for the opportunity to provide the following statement on behalf of the congregation, as the landowner of the site of T-Mobile's cell antennas. As many of you know, for over 200 years, South Congregational Church has been fulfilling its mission to provide for the well-being of the community and our members. Within our church, we offer worship services, classes, educational forums, healing services, and a thrift shop that helps those in need, all of which are open to the public. In addition, we provide space and encouragement for scouts, several 12-step groups, extra space for the Centerville Library, a warming shelter during storms, and emergency meeting space for the Centerville Elementary School, backpacks and school supplies for children, and various mission outreach services within the community, including outreach to persons struggling with homelessness, food insecurity, and substance use disorders. We also support an orphanage in India, as well as international relief programs through the United Church of Christ. We seek to carry out our mission faithfully and ethically. All income received goes to fund the missions and operation of our church. The hosting of cellular antennas will allow us to continue our important mission work, as well as provide a service to the community, that is, improve cell service and 911 coverage in a non-obtrusive manner that is compliant with all laws and regulations, and does not spoil the aesthetics of our beautiful community. The modeled RF at ground level will be almost 97% lower than what is allowed by the FCC. As stated last year by the Town Building Commissioner, T-Mobile, in tandem with the congregation, did our due diligence, obtained required permits, and have complied with all building codes on the local and federal level. We informed all members of the progress of the planning over the past two years through our monthly church newsletter and through church announcements, and presented the plans at two congregational meetings that were advertised a week ahead of time and open to the public. In conversation with several congregations which have installed cellular antennas, we found that none of them had town meetings in advance. We had no reason to believe that there would be objections to the antenna, given the universality of cellphone and other uses in our immediate neighborhood, communities, schools, businesses, all which depend on RF technologies. The safety of cell antennas compared to other daily risk factors, like UV rays, household appliances such as microwaves, x-rays, air travel, and the like. The approximately 164 cell towers already in place and approved by the Town of Barnstable within four miles, virtually all of them in residential neighborhoods and many near schools, T-Mobile's adherence to town codes, and scientific evidence regarding cell antennas and RF technologies. We are one of several Cape Cod churches in numerous town properties that have cell antenna arrays, including the First Church of Christ in Sandwich, which is adjacent to the library and hosts the preschool, Pilgrim Congregational in Harwich, which has had antennas in their church spire for about 20 years. There's a cell tower outside the door of the Barnstable Town Offices here in Hyannis. There is a cell tower located on the town transfer station near the Barnstable United Elementary and West Villages Elementary, another approximately 1,200 feet from the middle school, and there is a tower in Osterville located about 2,000 feet from Cape Cod Academy. Our antennas will be almost 2,000 feet from the Centerville Elementary School. And while there's no precise data, it's estimated that there are several thousand Catholic, Jewish, and Protestant congregations throughout the U.S. that have cell antennas to support their mission to the broader community. The National Cancer Institute website lists two fact sheets.
Just going to ask you to wrap it up pretty quickly.
Okay. Okay. I will just wrap that up and say, we have followed applicable laws throughout this process to sustain and expand our commitment to the community in the years ahead, and our involvement is about mission first and above all else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that was also part of the applicant. At this point, we'd like to have Jonathan Edwards of Citiescape Consultants to give an overview of the peer review.
Madam Chair, and Phil, board members. Citiescape was hired by the town or the village to assess the installation and the need for the T-Mobile facility. We looked at four main factors. Did the applicant provide materials to demonstrate that they need a site in the area? Has the applicant provided materials to demonstrate no other site was available to co-locate on an existing site to meet their objectives? Has the applicant provided the materials to demonstrate they meet safe emission standards? And has the applicant provided materials to demonstrate they meet any applicable FCC requirements? The first is what we tend to look at most, in most detail. The applicant has provided coverage maps and actually drive test data. Coverage maps are computer models to show you the coverage in the area of what they currently have and what they propose to have with the new installation. Drive test data is actual data from equipment that goes around and measures the actual signal in the area. And both of these do show that in the area of Centerville, that there's some very lacking service, mainly in the higher bands, the 2 gigahertz band, which is used for data, and a lot of data and pictures, and not necessarily voice calls as much as data, but it's part of their operations and part of their need of what they use every day for T-Mobile. We did find, as far as facilities to co-locate on, that the applicant did look at four of their locations in addition to the church. There is the Beach Club of Craigville Christian Camp Meeting Association, Trade Winds Development, and the Roman Catholic Bishop Fall River. These, two of these, the Trade Winds Development and the Roman Catholic Bishop were outside the search ring. A search ring is a confined area that the applicant targets to locate their facility within. If they're too far from their area of service, then they're not going to meet their goals because cell service is localized to within usually a few miles, but it depends on the facility. The Beach Club of Craigville was rather short, under 35 feet, and would really not meet their goals as well. We did look a little more detailed in the Christian Camp Meeting Association. That was ruled out because of structural limitations on the chimney. It is shorter than the church site that they're proposing, so our kind of question is to look at every option was, could they reinforce this chimney and still operate on there? That was a question we had. However, being that it's 40 to 45 feet, about 20 feet lower, it would open up the door to potentially needing another site to the northwest, because this site is farther down towards the water on the south. So it does leave some openings that might require another site if they were to go to this. So for those reasons, we found that the site they have, that they've proposed, is the best of these sites to meet their coverage goals. As far as safe emission standards, when we do reviews, we typically, there's two criteria we ask for, the most important being the RF exposure, and that's what a lot of the health concerns are about. That's the radiation that comes out of the antennas. And at the time, the other requirement is compliance with the FCC's interference requirements, and those are to make sure that they comply with any issues that would cause future interference to public safety, other radios that the government would use, or any other interference that's not present now. Typically, a statement will cover that they will continue to alleviate any interference with public safety. As far as the RF exposure goes, that's typically a study that's done in regard to an FCC bulletin that was released, and we don't, we did not see, at the time of our printing, we did not see a report for the exposure or the FCC compliance with interference. However, with our understanding of the site and what we understand, I don't see any issues where they're not going to meet the OET 65 requirements. However, they should still provide certification that they would do these, that this would be happened, would be met. It's up to them to certify that. And the final, only other FCC requirements that we would look for would be their license, which they did provide, as T-Mobile is licensed in the area to operate. So that's a summary of what we reviewed, and I can answer any questions if you have as well.
Bye. I'll have one question, but I'm sure the board has questions as well. Can you explain what exactly a peer review is?
So we are not hired by the applicant. We are a third-party reviewer to look at this from a technical standpoint, because many times, planning boards don't have the technical knowledge to understand what's necessary, what's required of these. And what we do, we do our reports to make sure that the ordinance, the local ordinance is covered, as well as federal law, because in the last few years, federal law has come down and really been pushing to get wireless facilities out there, and have limited what local ordinances can handle. So we look at both sides, federal law and local law and state law, and try and work to see how a site can be implemented that's the least obtrusive. Typically, the least obtrusive sites that we find are concealed sites, which is what this one is, where the antennas are not visible, as opposed to a tower, or maybe something that has a building with an actual exposed antenna that's been painted. But this is, these are behind the actual structure, so they're considered fully hidden and concealed. So these are what we strive to reach as far as recommendations. But our involvement is strictly to make sure that the Planning Board and the local community is not taken advantage of, that they know that the service is needed, because the federal government has issued mandates to have this built out, and the boards cannot, are not allowed by federal government to deny an application if it's shown that the need is there.
And can you just clarify who you're working for in this peer review?
So Citiescape is a company that was hired by the village, and I'm not sure if we're hired by Centerville or Barnstable, but I believe both, but as far as how that works. But we were asked to review this separate from T-Mobile, so we don't have any connection with T-Mobile or any other carriers when we do these things.
Okay, thank you. I'll refer to the rest of the board for questions. Fred, do you have any questions? Jeff?
Welcome, sir. Thank you for coming from Florida. How many of these types of reviews have you done, you know, in your career?
Over 100.
Okay. No further, no further questions.
Could you expand upon the statement about the FCC regulations in terms of what a village can and cannot do in terms of approving or not approving a certain facility specifically maybe to a location, or other than its necessity, I guess?
So if the ordinance provides that another facility, it comes down to, if the ordinance says that there's a hierarchy of locating a facility, say concealed would be the first hierarchy, and then a non-concealed existing tower would be the next hierarchy, and then say a new tower would be third hierarchy. If they were, if an applicant was proposed to the third level in the hierarchy, you can ask them to say why they can't go to one of the higher levels, being a concealed facility, or use an existing facility if there's concern. So we looked at these other options that we, that were not, that were lower locations that might not provide the same service. But being that this one was concealed and didn't pose any issues aesthetically, there wasn't much of a challenge to really look for an alternate site, but the applicant did pursue that. So, but there's other regulations the local town can do. They can require concealment, they can require, they just cannot say flat out no. They have to allow options for them to build out their network.
I don't, this may be outside of kind of your immediate scope of engagement, but in terms of sort of the health risks that certain cell towers pose, how does this compare to ones where you may have been involved in or be aware of that were negatively impacting the community that you recommended against?
Well, you do get, there's a lot of sensitivity wherever you go with the health issues. That's usually the number one issue that comes up. The other is aesthetics. I don't know if there's really much aesthetic to this, because you don't see the antennas. So I would think that the only concern you might have here would be the health issues. And to kind of explain that better, the FCC has a guideline of criteria that, based on power levels and frequencies, as to what a safe distance is for the antennas to be. And I think the general public probably tends to not understand that those distances are not very large or very small. And I don't want to go on record with saying how far, but we're saying within a few feet of the antenna. And when you get within that close, that's when you have health issues. And that's based on the studies that they've published, and that's all we're allowed to challenge or make sure they meet. If there's questions about the FCC study itself, whether it's valid or not, that's a different issue that would be dealt with, have to be dealt with through challenging Congress, because Congress actually has come out and said, you have to accept the OET 65, which is the Bolton 65 exposure criteria, and you're not allowed to challenge that. They've limited local governments to saying you can't challenge this based on a health risk, as long as it meets this bulletin, this published bulletin. So that's what we look for. We look for a study that shows they meet this bulletin, and they meet the criteria. And once that's done, that is probably as far as we can go. A lot of communities will want to challenge those, but that's a separate issue that local, the federal government has said the local jurisdictions cannot challenge. the federal government has said the local jurisdictions cannot challenge.
Thank you.
Kat?
Yes, thank you. First question, probably the most difficult one you'll ever get, is why couldn't you bring some warm weather with you when you came up from Florida?
It's windy and cold here.
I just wanted to follow up on Mary's question, if I could. So if I heard it correctly, essentially what you were hired to do was review the proposal that was presented to us by T-Mobile. So you didn't do a drive test, you didn't do your own computer testing of the area. You relied on their information to validate one way or the other what they've presented?
Correct.
Okay. And did you look only at their suggested sites? The question I ask is, about a mile up the road, there's a water tower that has existing tower antennas on it. Would that be a place that maybe could be an alternative location for them?
Is this the, and I did, I do remember looking at one of those. Is this across to the north, across?
Yes.
That is actually too far. I think, if I remember, about 1.2 miles, maybe, I'm guessing here.
It's actually under, it's under a mile.
I remember looking at that, and their search ring that they've proposed to locate, what they need to locate, their search ring is what's defined, defines the area, actually goes all the way down to the water and comes up to the edge of the church, just past the church. So it's actually outside of their area, of their search area, so it wouldn't meet their goals. They've already got, I think it's across twenty-eight, if I'm correct.
It is.
Yeah. So it's kind of a really different area. I mean, that's another thing that it's difficult to understand, that when you have a focused service area you're trying to cover, the water tower, and they may have antennas on that tower. I'd have to look to see. I don't think they do. I do see a site across twenty-eight, but I don't think, I don't think it's that far. I think that's probably most likely another carrier. But it's, I remember looking at that right away. That's too distant for them to meet their goals.
Okay, thank you.
Walt? No questions?
Excuse me, pardon me. I'm a new guy. I was wondering if I could ask a question of the attorney from the church, or their attorney and one of their representatives.
Why don't we finish up with Mr. Edwards first? Are you? Sure.
Of the hundred that you've done, how many have you turned down?
Oh, we've only recommended denial for a few, three, four, five, maybe, less than half a dozen.
And of all the reviews that you've done, are they specifically at the request of the mobile service and their documentation to go in that direction? In other words, of the ninety-five you've approved, has it always been at the information provided by the carrier?
In most cases, yes. There's been very few that we've used our information, but for the most part, yes, we use the carrier's information to document that.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to Fred's point, just from a protocol standpoint, that is typically how peer reviews are done. Just want to double down on that, that they come from the carrier and nowhere else. That's typical protocol. Is that correct?
Yes, and as an engineer, I'll look at that, and you can look at coverage maps and understand if sometimes they make sense or they don't make sense. We've actually called back and said, you know, maybe this isn't the right signal levels. Why don't you, a lot of times, there's, I would say probably many of the applications we look at might not be recommended for approval, and we go back with the applicant and say, can you provide more information? And ask them to really pursue their case. So in this case, we didn't ask for more information, but that's why the denial recommendation is usually lower because we may have to ask for more information to justify their needs.
Great. Thank you very much. At the request of Attorney Revere, I'd like to ask if you'd like to come up and make some remarks? And just to clarify, you are representing the majority of the people in this room on...
I haven't counted heads, but people consider themselves to be the Centerville Concerned Citizens group. I have two areas to address comments, and I think I can make that five-minute number that I suggested. One is in response to Mr. Schwartz's comments last week, and I asked specifically to be able to address them. And that is the assertion that this cellular array should not be allowed within the so-called Centerville District of Critical Planning Concern. If you look up on the map behind you, you will actually see, it's kind of hard to pick out, what is the Centerville Village District of Critical Planning Concern. It is the area marked CVD and consists, if you look at the map, that four-way intersection is the four corners intersection. In my material, you will see the church, or actually, you'll see the Congregational Church is up at the top of the matter there where the parking spaces are, and across from that is the country store. That is, those parcels within there that are outlined in blue are the Centerville Village District of Critical Planning Concern, the country store across the street, and three parcels on the south side consist of it all. But getting back to that, the history of this is fairly simple. The town created in nineteen ninety-nine a townwide zoning ordinance to allow cellular antennas within buildings. Okay? Ten years later, the District of Critical Planning Concern was proposed for the Centerville District, which is that small area there. And in those regulations, it was done to protect the unique historical and environmental interests of that area. In the, when this happens, all permitting is stopped and new, quote, implementing regulations are created. These implementing regulations are found in the Town of Barnstable ordinances at section two forty dash thirty, et cetera. Specifically excluded is the nineteen ninety-nine regulations that allow cellular towers or cellular array with inside buildings. Shows a clear decision by the town, town council, not to allow cellular antennas in buildings in that district. Now, if you think about it, and based on the reports we've heard, there are only a few buildings that this can be done in. This is the only building in the district that was suitable for a cellular antenna, and specifically, the regulation that was allowed to do it was not included. It's a clear statement, we're not allowing a cellular antenna in that building. Now, the Centerville Village District of Critical Planning Concern has a couple of outs. One is, zoning generally has the out-of-use variance. That, again, is not allowed in the Centerville Village District of Critical Planning Concern. The only thing that is allowed is a regulatory agreement, which you have before you today. And the regulatory agreement says, or the provision on it says, you can do other uses that aren't specifically allowed in the district. Of appropriate scale and function, they may be considered. And I think you can't say that this is of appropriate scale and function when it's exactly the same use that was excluded in the Centerville DCPC. And that was my point, is why are we doing by a regulatory agreement that which was excluded? I say that again because this board has seen regulatory agreements, and much of this is in my letter, of course. Regulatory agreements generally require, come with a proffer, a specific benefit to the town for a site-specific change to zoning. Here, T-Mobile has essentially said, we want the change in zoning and we'll sue you if we don't get it. The FCC will force it down your throat through a federal court. I don't think that's an appropriate regulatory agreement. I don't think a regulatory agreement is appropriate for this area in the only building that was suitable to have a cellular array and was disallowed under the Centerville Village District of Critical Planning Concern. The one other issue, which will be very short, is we have the consultant here from Citiescape. And I remember when the report came out, the first thing came to me was, wow, this was pretty lean compared to the scope of work. And I looked down the scope of work, and I have it before me. If I was sitting on the board, I would want to ask the following questions, which are right in the scope of work. Where is the accuracy verification of site plan materials and application completeness of submission? Where are the compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local structural safety and exposure and human safety codes? There's nothing I've yet to see about anything about structure. Is this structure appropriate physically to take what's being able to be put up into it? Compliance with all zoning approvals, i.e. correctness of non-concealed concealed design, low-profile antenna design, maintaining the correct number of co-locations, assurance of matching concealment, nothing. Evaluation of aesthetic impacts, possible mitigation of structures, shelters, containers, landscaping. Determination of whether the site's search ring is adequate based on generally accepted engineering principles for the intended site. I heard that question. Who did the search ring? I was told that T-Mobile came up with the search ring. We were told, the report was, the independent consultant is going to verify the search ring. I'm not sure it was there. I could continue down that list, but I think simply read the list and compare it to what's in the report. I don't think, while I'm not disagreeing with it, Mr. Edwards is independent. I look at this evaluation, and it came off to me as being a simple run-through rubber stamp. I said a week ago, when we discussed, two weeks ago, when we discussed this, in my written materials, we're talking about something that doesn't comply with zoning, and all the comparison sites are things that comply with zoning. That's apples to oranges. What other sites could be done that don't comply with zoning should have been the answer of Citiescape? I want to thank you very much, and I will take any questions.
I'll ask the board if they have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who has any comments? I think there's some...
Good evening. Kevin Davis. I'm the owner of Davis Towing in Hyannis. We've been there for forty years. I use T-Mobile for my night dispatch service, and we communicate through New England, AAA. We have no problems communicating with any of the New England states through our T-Mobile. So I think the coverage story, I can tell you firsthand, doesn't hold any water. I think it comes down to the money. And, you know, the thought of the merger that T-Mobile's doing, and they want this location, I just think, you know, they're basically tearing the community apart, the church, and that's basically what I have to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name is Joanne Ackman. I reside at five fifty-five Main Street in Centerville, and I do have something I'd like to share with you, if I may. We're going to have it on the screens as well.
I'm here tonight to share the results of a drive test conducted on behalf of the Centerville Concerned Citizens. We felt the need to conduct our own tests because it is evident that T-Mobile went to great lengths to illustrate a significant gap in coverage, even to the point of contradicting their own data, which was part of the peer review that stated there is good coverage in vehicle. On Saturday, February twenty-third, my sister Janet Davis and I set out on a drive test using T-Mobile's map and data. We replicated the T-Mobile map accurately, as you will see on your exhibit. We began our call from a T-Mobile phone using Google Maps as part of our route, and at the back of the packet, you'll see we kept track of where we were on Google Maps, and the last page shows the two telephones we used, as well as the route that we took. Okay. So the drive test lasted thirty-seven minutes. And you will see on our drive test map, we have noted the locations along the route where T-Mobile experienced dropped connections. You'll see T-Mobile's map, the original map that they used, and then we followed it very accurately with our map. Okay, you'll see on our test map, we've noted the locations along the route where T-Mobile experienced dropped connections. We had no dropped calls. We performed the test twice that day. No dropped calls. To further emphasize there is no significant gap in coverage, we used T-Mobile's website coverage map. That's what you're looking at right here. This is on their website, and you can go to their website and hit on any one of these little stickers that we used. It will show you the address, the coverage. You'll see here that eighty-eight percent of the coverage in this area is good. Twelve percent shows fair coverage. Even in these areas with fair coverage, we experienced no dropped calls. I just want to say, if we are to believe in truth in advertising, T-Mobile has no gap in coverage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll sign that after. My name is Meg Lockren. I'm a resident of West Barnstable, and I am reading this letter this evening on behalf of the family of Lorraine O'Connor, who has operated the eighteen fifty-six country store for forty-two years and counting. And we felt it was important that her voice be heard tonight, but she was unable to attend, so I'm going to read this letter on her behalf. My name is Lorraine O'Connor, and I live at five fifty-five Main Street in Centerville. My husband and I purchased the eighteen fifty-six country store in Centerville forty-two years ago. We fell in love with Centerville, and on one of our many visits to Cape Cod, on one of our many visits to Cape Cod, I knew I was destined one day to own the country store, and when it became available in nineteen seventy-seven, we jumped at the chance to make it ours. I never imagined our lovely village of Centerville would be embroiled in such a controversial situation as the one we find ourselves in now. When I learned a cell tower was being installed next door in the South Congregational Church steeple, I was both shocked and saddened by the news. I would hope if we were given an offer to change the use of our store by a large corporation, we would give consideration to our neighbors and have notified them of any significant changes we would be making to the landscape of our village. Knowing that the cell tower poses serious health implications for our community causes me deep concern. This special place, where I see children daily running through our doors at the store after a morning or afternoon at the playground, will forever be changed if this tower is allowed to move forward. So many young children visit Main Street daily, I'm picturing a circle of children enjoying the library story hour just feet from this cellular steeple. How do we explain to the children of Centerville that the adults around them did not operate under a code of common sense and decency and put their needs first? How proud would we be as a community to have a voice in setting safer standards for the placement? Thank you for your time, Lorraine O'Connor, eighteen fifty-six country store.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else? Just have to introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Teagan Garrity, and I'm one of the many neighbors of Main Street Centerville. I have many friends and family that live in this area, and I'm here to speak about what it is like from a child's perspective. The first time I ever heard about this matter was about a year ago. My mom encouraged me to speak at one of these meetings to show that kids have a say in what happens in the village, as well as expressing my concerns that I have in this cell tower. My previous speech was about how I had and still have spent the majority of my childhood walking up and down the hill with my friends, watching parades, and making many other fond memories. Yet since this cell tower is being installed, future generations may not be able to do the same as I did due to its dangerous effects. Since then, I have the same feelings about it, and I know much more dangerous information after doing deeper research. And I know the real reason why this is such a major disturbance to the people of the village. Microwave radiation is emitted into the air from the cell tower, and after a long period of time exposed to it, it could... And as a child viewing all these consequences, I truly, I'm truly scared. I expect the leadership of this town to look out for the well-being of the community members and children, although if it is turned on, I won't feel that this is accomplished and I won't continue to want to spend time here. I ask you to do the right thing for our village and do not allow the cell tower to get turned on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in Centerville, a few blocks from the Congregational Church. Although I currently work in technology, my background is in architecture. I have a master's in architecture. The permit that T-Mobile is requesting, for me, goes to some core questions of what does that historic district mean for us? What does it mean to want to preserve the unique character of a place or an area? Does it mean making sure that the moldings and the cornices and the windows, everything looked nice and have a historic character? Maybe a little bit, but I actually think it's something more than that. I think, are we trying to protect the spirit of a place? Something that involves not just the visual attributes, but really goes to the ephemeral qualities that give a place its historical character. This proposal takes a 200-year-old church and turns it to what seems to me is a kind of industrial use. It damages the spirit and the quality of this place without giving much back to the community in return. To me, it takes something quite valuable and exchanges it for a commodity. My understanding is the principle that's being applied to this decision is that the benefits of the project must outweigh its detriments. The proposal seems to go completely against the spirit of the DCPC and why it was set up. I've heard a lot of people get up and say that this is something they do not want or need. There's quite a lot of passion that I see around this issue. So my question to the board is, why give up something that this community has worked so hard to protect for something that seems to offer very little benefit to us?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joyce Frederick. I live at 382 Main Street. I moved to Centerville six years ago after two lung surgeries. I bought and restored my dream home with an art studio in Centerville Village. I love this quaint, quiet, picturesque, friendly neighborhood. Then I found out that T-Mobile was installing a telecommunications equipment in the Congregational Church three-tenths of a mile from my house without notifying the neighbors. I asked at the general store what was so bad about having a cell tower in our neighborhood. They referred me to online sites that explained the horrific dangers. When I was a teenager, I smoked cigarettes, thought I was really cool. Research was talking about a connection to cancer. The big tobacco companies refuted the claims for years, saying there was no danger. Well, years later, I was diagnosed with lung cancer, even though I didn't smoke for that long. Now, big telecommunications companies are telling us the research is not definitive, not conclusive. There is well-documented information from the World Health Organization and other reliable health agencies that say EMFs are hazardous to humans and affect the very young and the very old. The very old will be gone soon, but the very young will be affected by long-term with unexplained symptoms and diseases. The church is willing to sacrifice for dollars, its parishioners, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts who meet in the church, the young and the old who visit the Country Store and public library next door and the playground across the street. Are you going to sacrifice our community's health for corporate greed? You know this is a slippery slope downward. This is only the beginning. The citizens of Centerville do not want or need more electromagnetic fields in our community. Please do not let the T-Mobile weaponize the church steeple. Do the right thing, the responsible thing, and oppose this installation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Reza Madavi and we live in Bacon Lane, a few hundred feet away from the church. This is the house of Reverend Elashia Bacon, who preached at South Congregational Church for 17 years. At the end of my 20 years of foreign assignment for Cisco Systems, now the biggest telecom and internet working equipment giant in U.S., I and my family had a choice to make. Where in the world was the best place for us to settle down and raise our children? We could have picked up anywhere, but it was Centerville Village, a real gem with a charm and history that lured us from Paris, France, to here. Knowing the value of protected historical character, also known as DCPC, we embarked on a restoration of a project of our 1842 house. Alternative buyers wanted to demolish and divide this property. We are a T-Mobile customer. We are satisfied with our current coverage. I am a CEO of a software company. We cannot live and work without our network. I continue to advise a number of international companies on the future of big next thing, including Internet of Things and 5G. But let me ask the audience here behind me, with a show of hands, how many of you live and own properties here in Centerville? How many of you are willing to lose up to 20% of your home value based on T-Mobile tower inside the church barfry? Do a quick Google search for property values next to a cell tower. It would yield close to 50,000, I'm sorry, 50 million citation and websites. Bottom line, no one wants this cell tower in populated residential area for reason of health, historical character, and significant impact to our net worth. All of this has been for a few thousands of dollars a month the church would receive and we lose about 20% of our home value. What is the benefit to the community? A quick calculation would demonstrate the loss of millions of dollars to Centerville Village residents so that T-Mobile can increase its average revenue per user, which may make their market cap higher so that they can buy Sprint for $26 billion. Oh, by the way, Sprint already has a tower on top of that water tank. Is there not another way for us to help the church to thrive financially without dividing our community further and bring them back to the good grace of neighborhoods? Members of the council, we, the residents of Centerville Village, including the church and its members, will be the ultimate loser, loser should you decide for the installation to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janet Davis and I live in Centerville. Captive, having no freedom to choose or avoid something, to be controlled by an establishment or company. This definition best describes our state of mind these last 11 months. Municipalities across the country are also powerless and at the mercy of the outdated FCC regulations that are putting us at great risk. Congress and the FCC have extended the wireless industry carte blanche to build infrastructure no matter the consequences to local communities. One RF engineer, Marvin Wessel, and five of his colleagues tested 5,000 sites in 2014. They found over 10% of them to be non-compliant with FCC emission standards. He stated often these emissions can be 600% or more above the allowed exposure levels. Clearly, the FCC is not enforcing its own standards. Mr. Wessel said, "It's like having a speed limit and no police." Former FCC official Bob Weller confirms the lax enforcement of antenna standards. He cites budget cuts at the agency limit the FCC's ability to perform field inspections. So on one hand, we have the FCC, a kept agency with a revolving door of former telecom executives, and the other, the telecom companies that have had exclusions put in their insurance policies by Lloyds of London and others, who recognize wireless radiation as a leading risk. These exclusions may leave our municipalities legally responsible for damages from fires, loss of health, and property devaluation due to the close proximity of cell antennas to homes, workplaces, and schools. So who is liable should the tower at the South Congregational Church be powered? When illnesses begin to appear in our community, will we look to you, the town, for remedy? We argue that the cell tower is a church need, not a T-Mobile need. We're asking the town to choose the protection of its fellow residents over the flawed arguments of T-Mobile's coverage lapse. We can't allow big industry to throw its weight around via threats of litigation. Telecom has enjoyed the protections of the FCC long enough. We ask that you take a stand and set the precedent that other towns can follow. Just tell them no. Thank you.
Mike Curley, 149 Old Stage Road, Centerville. Thank you for your time. And also thank you for giving us everyone in the group, thank you for giving everyone in the group time as well. We appreciate it. We appreciate the patience of everyone else in the room that has matters before you. This is my third planning board meeting and I've been to one zoning board meeting as well. There's really nothing left for me to say. I'm not going to take any extra time. I think everyone in our group has done a great job. I just have three questions and they all regard to the permit process. I have a copy of the building permit provided to the Town of Barnstable from T-Mobile. It is full of flaws. It's not filled out. It's not even half-filled out. I'd like you to look at it. I'd like you to read it. I don't need to go through it. There's no historic sign-offs. There's no planning board sign-offs. There's no special, there's no ZBA planning board sign-offs. To follow what Mr. Revere said, as far as the Centerville Village District, right now the church, it doesn't, under the Centerville District, it doesn't meet the height requirements. It's 36 feet. The towers are at 60 feet. The building itself, it doesn't meet any of the building, Town of Barnstable building setbacks, either on the front, on Main Street, or on Churchill Road. That's all I have to say. I really appreciate your time. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Conway. I live on Park Avenue. Planning board members, Madam Chair, attorneys, ladies and gentlemen. Is Attorney Wiles here tonight? No? Okay. At the end of our last session, Attorney Wiles stated quite clearly that any decisions involving this applicant could only be made through local planning boards and these boards would have no authority at all with regards to the FCC. Accordingly, I took Attorney Wiles's comments and focused exclusively on the code. Under requirements for all personal wireless facilities in all zoning districts, specifically 240-107E, structural components, including guywire anchors and any and and equipment shelters, shall comply with all required setbacks of the zoning district. The church and its steeple are prominently located on the corner of Main Street and Churchill Road and it is my understanding that the setbacks for any new cellular antenna constructed under the current guidelines of 240-107E would require compliance with the setbacks for a corner lot. A lot not deemed a corner lot would include a setback of 15 feet. However, this church and its steeple are located on a corner lot. Because this lot is a corner lot, the setback would increase to 30 feet. I'm going to provide you copies of the drawings provided to the town and I ask for your review of the areas highlighted in yellow at the bottom, which include, in my estimation, fictitious dimensions and the notes, which are also highlighted at the bottom of these drawings, may be the source for why these dimensions are fictitious. 169-9C, a regulatory agreement may not be used to prevent the Town of Barnstable or other governmental agents from requiring a qualified applicant to comply with the laws, rules, and regulations and policies enacted after the date of the regulatory agreement. If the Town of Barnstable or governmental agency determines that the imposition of and compliance with newly effective laws and regulations are essential to ensure the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of all or part of the jurisdiction, are the current lawsuits against wireless companies and the recent study funded by President Clinton with some 3,000 rodents involved suitable evidence against the applicant to deny their application? Please remember the study funded by President Clinton was simply exposures from a cellphone, not a cell tower. If not, perhaps the State Department of Public Health in California being forced to release guidelines in March of last year after a lawsuit by University of California Berkeley researcher Dr. Joel Moskowitz. At the time, the department said the guidelines, again, only applicable to a cellphone, not a cell tower, were only a draft, but they now are the state's official position. Please know the state of Connecticut released similar guidelines also in 2018. I urge you to listen to a very recent interview by Connecticut's Senator Blumenthal, the FCC executives about their commitment to testing. And at one point, he says, and I am paraphrasing, "So it seems we are flying by the seat of our pants." If the planning board decides to activate this cell tower on one of the most historic streets on Cape Cod, thereby being dismissive of the DCPC, being dismissive of the historic registration of this building with the state as one of the 75 contributing properties on Cape Cod, and being dismissive of the applicable codes with the CDD, regulatory agreement, and personal wire service, and suffering from devaluation to our homes, what do we get for all of this? We will improve a church's operating budget and we will marginally improve wireless company's cell coverage for literally a handful full of people who happen to use T-Mobile as their cellphone, but tonight I think we heard the counter to that position by T-Mobile. These would be the only marginal at-best benefits weighed against the extreme detriment of the collective long-term health of all who would be exposed to this tower and the financial well-being of all the people who are here tonight and many more who could not be. We implore all of you, with every ounce of energy in our being, to please say no to this applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity that you're giving us to actually have democracy working. So thank you for allowing us to share our concern. My name is Marie Pierre Delenzeguer. Our house is on Bacon Lane. We are two houses down from the church. We are T-Mobile customers. We actually have five lines with T-Mobile. We've had that for years. We've never had any complaint and at the beach, you know, we're very satisfied customers. Most of my points have already been raised, so I'm going to concentrate on a few questions for you, although you may not be able to answer. As we are residents, going to be facing loss of property value, is there already a provision within the city to think about the way you would adjust the tax assessments of our properties? Some of us will not stay. Some people will move out. We know that many people currently pay attention to where those cellular towers are and may not decide to want to live that close to the tower. What's going to be the impact in terms of tax revenue for the town? I'm asking the question. On a very practical side, who in the Town of Barnstable will we have to turn to with expertise and authority to monitor those emissions? Who has the authority and the competence to check for safety? Is it the Health Department? In Cambridge, for example, I know that we cannot locate anyone who has the measuring device, you know? So are we supposed to buy that equipment ourselves as residents at a cost of close to $400 per equipment? And then assuming we buy it, assuming we collect the data, whom are we going to turn to? Not to the provider? Who's in the town will be able to answer our questions and deal with our concern? And maybe lastly, although I may turn emotional, you know, so far... And, and maybe lastly, although I may turn emotional, you know, so far, we've, I've been a very happy T-Mobile customer. I just pledge you not to have us turn into, turn into a T-Mobile guinea pig in a real-life experiment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that's new?
Hello, my name is Gillian Robertson. Most people who know me, know me from the Captain David Kelly House. It's number five bed and breakfast in the country, um, the number 23 in the world, and it's also three doors down from the church. I'd like to address a couple things that the lawyer from the church said. She said that other places have these towers in their churches, but what she didn't say is that we're not talking about other places. We're talking about Centerville. And Centerville is where we live. We are the residents of Centerville. We are the taxpayers of Centerville. We are the voters of Centerville, and we are invested in this town. Regardless of what other people are doing, this is our town, and we are passionate about preserving it. We're telling you no. If you allow this cell tower to be powered up, you're basically telling us that our voices don't matter. We pay taxes. We own the land in this town, and don't our voices matter more than corporations? I think they do. The DCPC matters. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Molly Sproul, and we live on Main Street, right across the street from the Centerville, um, from the Congregational Church and the Country Store. And I believe, Paul, would you mind putting up the collage of pictures? If you look closely at these pictures, the church steeple is in each one, and it's the perspective that each of us get from our bedroom windows primarily, in such proximity to the, to the potential hazard of the tower within the steeple. The rapid rate of innovation and technology and digital advancement brings challenges that we face not only in our village, but around the globe. Naysayers have asked if we're willing to give up our cell phones, shut off our computers, and return to paperfold-out maps. That's certainly not what this is about. What we are embracing is the responsibility that we have to establish safe practices and to educate each other in that regard. The experience that we have had over the last 10 months has given us the opportunity for empowering ourselves and our community. The early in the process finding that the Congregational Church sits within the DCPC is the reason that we can continue having this conversation. We face our choices with significantly different facts than when we started. We can each make the safe choice to turn off our cell phones to airplane mode, hardwiring our computers. We can control those choices for ourselves. However, the choice to uphold the tenants of DCPC is at your table. As complex it is, as it has become, the right a choice, the right choice appears quite simple. You've heard our voices. The importance of community engagement has informed and legitimized this decision-making process. We're thankful to those who intelligently crafted the DCPC. We are now dependent upon you to represent us with your vote to uphold the DCPC and deny the regulatory agreement. We, the Centerville citizens, are hardly a group of protesters. We are families and friends. We are neighbors. We are people who want to know more, and to get involved, and to help each other. We treasure the lifestyle we've chosen in our seaside Cape Cod village, our village that is steeped in history, the history that DCP intended to protect. Our ultimate goal is to bring peace back to our village, to take down the signs of protest, and to celebrate our ability to enjoy the parades on Main Street, meet in the park, and walk down the street without fearing the ramifications of electromagnetic radiation. We want to look at the iconic church steeple and realize how far we have come together in our mission to protect the place we proudly call home. Then we must choose to go forward to address the greater challenges this journey, this, of this journey as a community that will set a powerful example of the difference we can make when we work collaboratively for justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lynch from Centerville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to raise a couple of quick points. One is, has the town thought about whether this church will be taxed as a commercial facility if this tower is allowed to go in? The church would be taking itself from being a nonprofit right now to being a for-profit commercial enterprise, and some of us feel therefore we would expect the town would tax them as such. Right now, there's a cell tower, among all the cell towers, there's one right now on Falmouth Road, Route 28 in Hyannis, in the Child's Building, and it's assessed at $84,000. And the property owner there is paying taxes on that, and therefore, why shouldn't the church, if this is allowed, also pay taxes on their cell tower? They're, they're reaping an income from that. So we hope that that will happen, and I hope the church will consider that, and we urge the church to think about that while there may still be time to get out of this contract, which we understand some church members are eager to do. I also, no, my time is running out. I also wanted to point out, which some people have alluded to a little bit here, and that is, if you look at the Cityscape report, you see that they talk about the level of coverage and reception in various categories of geography. One is, uh, customers driving around in their cars. The Cityscape report refers to the reception there as adequate. Remember, Cityscape took all of its information that it reviewed from T-Mobile. So if T-Mobile's information indicated to Cityscape that there's adequate reception for customers driving around the target area in their vehicles, why then, two weeks ago, did T-Mobile representatives put up colorful maps here that we all looked at and showed what dismal, nearly nonexistent coverage in the target area for people driving around in their cars? The two, both can't be right, and if that's not right, you should be questioning what's going on and what else isn't right. I don't believe it. I don't believe their data. I also wanted to point out, if I still have a little bit of time, that we believe you can say no to this. We feel that you're being told from a variety of corners, you must say yes to this. Sorry, your hands are tied. I don't think so, because if you look at a letter from our attorney, Paul Revere, to you earlier this month, he talks about the various reasons why a town cannot say no. One is health. You cannot say no to health, but nevertheless, we tell you about the serious health consequences because we want you to share our concern. That's not the reason you can say no. Another reason is you can't say no if they've demonstrated that there is a need, in other words, that there are coverage gaps and no alternative locations for towers. They have not demonstrated that, and we feel we would be successful when T-Mobile sues the town if the tower is denied. We feel we'd be successful because the data is on our side. We dispute their data that says there are coverage gaps. Joanne and Janet, Joanne spoke here first, I believe, they did a very controlled, very scientifically-done test drive about a week ago. They did it twice. They had no gaps in reception. It's a 180 degrees difference from what T-Mobile told you two weeks ago was the case. You also have anecdotal-
Just, just try to wrap up.
Okay, thanks. You also have anecdotal evidence from a parade of T-Mobile customers who've, who've come before you and told you that coverage is just fine. Uh, so we, um, we, we, we don't, we, we believe that if T-Mobile sues, the town would be just fine, and we had, we think the evidence is on our side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Diane Covanda, speaking to the obvious again.
If, um, I just want to clarify-
New information.
New information, okay?
Yes. I went to T-Mobile after our last meeting here, and I asked them if I could get a phone and would I have great coverage, because I'm a Verizon customer, and I wanted to be sure that T-Mobile could compete with Verizon on Main Street where I live in Centerville. And, um, I mentioned everything that the map that was put up last time. I mentioned all the places in the Hyannis T-Mobile store that I was worried about, and they assured me that T-Mobile works very well there. So my information comes directly from T-Mobile, and as I spoke to the obvious, I used my mom's old T-Mobile Samsung Galaxy in all of those places prior to, just like Joanne and Janet did. They work in all those places. Uh, no, I did not try to get on Facebook while I was driving. That's data, but all my phone calls work. So just wanted to state the obvious because I don't believe we're being told the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Fair, and my family owns the home. We're in the bottom middle picture there, 558 Main Street. And, uh, my parents bought the home in 1972. Uh, they raised 10 children, 27 grandkids, one great-grandchild, a bunch of wives and husbands. There's 55 strong right now, with more coming. Um, and I'm here representing everyone, just to ask you to look at the facts. I can throw a rock and hit library, candy store, playground from that steeple. So I'm just asking you to say no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Snell. I live 400 feet from the church, and-
I just want to confirm this is new from the last time?
Yes, oh yeah.
New information?
Yes.
Okay. Or new comments, I should say.
Oh, we have so much new information, we could do this for years. Yes. I just want to say, this is not T-Mobile's first rodeo. Hingham, of the, in Hingham, in 2016, the ZBA tabled T-Mobile permit in light of resident concerns about health effects. In Lexington, Massachusetts, in 2010, T-Mobile was denied permit where residents showed there was no gap in service. In Belcher Town, in 2015, ZBA denied permit for tower where Verizon did not show gap, and residents concerned about proximity to residential area, effect on property values, and potential health effects. Burbank, California, 2012, denied T-Mobile's proposal to install a church sanctuary because no gap in coverage. Coverage was good and great. South Huntington, New York, 2010, T-Mobile was ordered to take down cell tower erected on property deemed environmentally sensitive. And, um, this is from Corinne Whitaker, who couldn't be here, and she is a retired lawyer and resident of Centerville, and she has found that while tower companies have the ability to file suit after such denials, if you were to deny it, in reading some of these cases, I have found that courts have upheld the town's decisions where they are well substantiated based on local zoning requirements, and there is no actual gap in service. Be not afraid.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jack Dambrosia. I live at 43 Bacon Lane, at a home that's been in our family for about 35 years. You know, just as an observation, as I look around the room tonight, I see a, a wealth of support and spirit, and I see a church that needs support, and it's unfortunate that those two can't be brought together. Just, just an observation. My wife and I are about to look at investing significantly in our home in Bacon Lane so we can fill it up with, uh, grandkids someday soon. So I hope that's the case. But this does give us pause, serious pause, not only for health, but certainly for the value investment. The fact that the FCC allows us, or is telling us that we can't consider the health threat, that's unconscionable, okay? So I think what that comes down to is somebody somewhere has to have courage and step up, okay? That, if you look over the course of history, that's how things get changed. Just, uh, one, one last thing. There's a German philosopher, late 1700s, Arthur Schopenhauer. He made this quote, "All truth passes through three stages. First, it is ridiculed. Second, it is violently opposed. Third, it is accepted as being self-evident." Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, if you could sign in as well.
Right here?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Marie McHugh, and I'm a patron of the Centerville Library and a customer of the Country Store, and I am just reminded that many, many years ago, the town, Village of Centerville, stopped a McDonald's from coming in. McDonald's is quite large. It was for different reasons. So I just want to applaud the democracy of the village and to put that out there, uh, that when people gather together, just because something is doesn't mean it has to happen, and it, it's just probably just not the right thing for the village. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? Sure.
I'm Lisa Conway. I live on Park Avenue, and we just heard from the gentleman from Cityscape who, we paid money to do a search, a understanding of what the danger is of the cell tower, and I just heard him say that within feet of the cell tower radiation, there is danger to the people that are affected by it. That's the people in the church. That's the people working in the church, and I know there are lots of people sitting in this room that live within feet of this tower, and he just said it was dangerous, and I think we should explore that more with him while he's here from Florida.
Great. Just sign in. Anyone else? Nope? Um, I believe we have a question. You have a question for, uh, the attorney? Um, I'm sorry, the-
Yes, Madam Chairman, I was wondering if I could ask the attorney representing the church, or, or church official, a question regarding their statement.
Attorney Powell.
Attorney Powell, right. Good evening, Attorney Powell, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
So, I, I'm going to ask a question that we would ask any business. Now, do I refer to your church as a business? In some ways, it's a business. It's a business of charity. In your statement, it's a business of charity, outreach, ministry, fellowship through scouting, et cetera. So it provides a service. I'd like to ask you if, does your client, that facility in Centerville benefit from being within the DCPC district? Is there any benefit to it?
I'm not sure. I think you need to explain, uh-
I was, I was wondering if they have any benefit from being within the village in the DCPC zone? Do you benefit from that?
I'm sure there are benefits to that.
Okay, uh, thank you. I was just wondering if the candy store wanted to paint their building green, would it be inappropriate? No, so, there is some benefit. I'd also like to ask, uh, a question regarding spirit and intent. So the DCPC has a spirit and intent, and one of the members of the town mentioned spirit. So, I have no qualm or issue with, uh, attorney sues, uh, T-Mobile wanting to build out their network as a corporation. They're absolutely entitled to do that, and we as citizens throughout the country benefit from it, as through other carriers. But when you look at the DCPC, there's a spirit and intent, and it was mentioned what it was before. So I would, I would say that your business, the facility that you represent, meets the spirit of that law- law or regulation in that there's a tower that's hidden, whereas the intent may be that there are no towers within Centerville. You brought up a word ethically. Now, this is not a court of law and, but my understanding of courts of law, if a witness or a statement is made that opens a door that otherwise would be closed, then it's an area that you could then pose a question. Is that true? In some sorts, being reasonably so.
Yes, this is not a court of law.
No. But looking at, I just want to, looking at what business you're in, that you stated, charity, outreach, fellowship, et cetera, on your business, on your building permit, you submitted your words of a preamble of the constitution of your organization. And I'd just like to quote a statement out of it. Subparagraph two of the preamble of the Constitution of the United Church of Christ, your paperwork that you submitted, says, in subparagraph two, the third sentence says, "It looks to the Word of God and the Scriptures and to the presence and power of the Holy Spirit to prosper its creative and redemptive work in the world." And so I just, I guess go back to, if we were asking a business about scope and purpose, as we did two other issues that came before us prior to yours, we would look at the scope of the work and the purpose of the work. So looking at the DCPC zoning, which I believe your facility benefits from, and reading your words that you submitted on your building permit, I just see that there's a conflict in your messaging and you're, a conflict in the advantage that you may have through the DCPC. It's maybe more of a statement than a question, but you answered a couple of my questions.
And they get in more of a statement.
Thank you.
It's more of a statement. I would love the attorney.
Mr. Watson, could I just respond briefly?
Absolutely.
First, the church has been there for approximately 200 years, well before the establishment of the DCPC. So whether or not we benefit from it or not, we've been there and the DCPC was issued and created after the church was there. I also would state that the regulatory agreement that we're proposing and that we put before you as part of our application does not violate the purposes and intent of the DCPC regulations as set forth in 240-130.1, 1 through 6. We don't believe that the regulatory agreement violates any of those provisions.
Yes, sir.
And its use within the church as well.
Not to be argumentative in my last comment.
Sure.
You brought up the age of the church. 200 years ago, there was no such thing as a telecommunications, telephone, radio, or anything else. So I, if you're going to compare when the facility was built and for what purpose and when a regulation come, it's kind of conflicting as well. Thank you.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand your point, but I respect your comment.
Thank you.
Up here, Attorney Sousa.
Comment.
Just a question. Now, I agree with what you're saying to a certain extent, but I think it poses sort of a question, whether it's to you or to the other attorney, which is, as I read the regulation verbatim, as you remember, I'm not going to do it again in the interest of time, it stated that other uses could be permitted, however, by regulatory agreement. Now, you guys went to the zoning board of appeals first. I'm sure there's a reason for that. Could you just explain, you know, that reason, please? I just, it's just a curiosity.
I can, absolutely.
So I appreciate that.
I can. And so I would also like to state that Attorney Revere suggested or characterized our behavior as such. Coming into the town, give me the permit or I'm going to sue you. At no point have either I or any other representative of T-Mobile had that tone or suggested that, neither in any public hearing or any meeting that we've had with town officials. In fact, what we first did, the representatives did, is met with all town officials relative to at least our interpretation of the zoning ordinance, which suggested and has a primary preference to install wireless antenna installations in structures where they would be entirely concealed. And respectfully, we went through that entire process and we were guided to the point of obtaining a building permit. Okay? And then later on, after starting construction, we were contacted by officials of the town and we entered a stay of those construction activities in order to enter this process. And in situations where a municipality has a zoning ordinance, where it does not permit this use, a wireless use, and there are municipalities where that does happen, where you simply cannot have a wireless installation in any residential district, which would in some cases rule out any wireless installation in a significant portion of the town and therefore be an effective prohibition and in violation of the federal act. In those cases, there is federal law that allows us to obtain a use variance as a form of relief because if the town doesn't grant the use variance, then it's a violation of federal law. And so that's the reason why we put together an application for a use variance, submitted to the zoning board of appeals. They decided not to take jurisdiction over the application. They wanted to make a determination as to whether or not there was a significant gap. They also felt that the proper recourse for us was to in fact file an application with this board and ask for a recommendation to the town council and ask for a regulatory agreement pursuant to the DCPC. And so in each case, we have followed the direction of the town, first in getting a building permit, which was valid, we thought validly issued to us and in full cooperation with that building permit application process. Then we were guided, we felt appropriately, to get a, to request a use variance. And then later on, we were asked to in fact get a regulatory agreement from this board, or I should say a recommendation to the town council for a regulatory agreement. We feel that that regulatory agreement that we've presented as part of our application sets forth benefits in the form of reliable coverage. We do feel that that's a significant benefit to the community. As you know, wireless services has become ubiquitous. I don't think there's a person in this room who doesn't use wireless services. And pursuant to our FCC license, we want to make sure and we are required to make sure that those are reliable. And so we do constant testing of our network in order to make sure that they are reliable. And we developed a gap in coverage that we feel is significant. We have presented testimony both in the form of radio frequency plots and also a drive test to in fact show that we have a significant gap. From a common sense standpoint, and I said this at the last hearing, why would we go through this process, offer to pay rent to the church and spend the amount of money that we've spent on engineering, excuse me, lawyers' fees, time, money, to build an installation that we really do not need? This is not a situation where we have a partnership perhaps with one of the tower infrastructure companies where they're going to benefit from this site. We simply have to pay rent in order to utilize this structure. And so at every point, we have found a way to fix that gap in coverage. And now that we have proven the significant gap in coverage and that the town's peer consultant has reviewed our material and in fact has confirmed that there in fact is a significant gap in coverage, then at this point, the municipality cannot either prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless telecommunications, cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the effective, the provision of wireless services. The unique thing, however, is that you have a situation where two boards of this municipality may have jurisdiction, your board in the form of a regulatory agreement and the ZBA in the form of a potential use variance, to in fact grant us the relief that we need in order to build this installation, in order that we can fix that significant gap in coverage. That's the unique situation that you're in. And if you can well imagine, the DCPC is incredibly unique, I have to say. I have not seen this zoning mechanism in many places. And I've been doing zoning in all the New England states and in many municipalities through Massachusetts. It's very unique. But the federal law, the Telecommunications Act, doesn't say that a town or a city can't have a regulation that either prohibits or effectively prohibits. It also says a state. So a city or a state cannot effectively prohibit. So you can't have a situation because otherwise you may have a situation where a state or cities gather together and create DCPCs in half of Massachusetts to prevent all wireless telecommunications. And the supremacy clause of the Constitution does not allow a state to essentially pass laws that violate a federal act, the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And so this municipality, the town of Barnstable, has to make sure that it makes a decision that complies with the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and all the federal case law that interpret the Telecommunications Act. And that's your charge. This is your decision as to whether or not, and we feel that the regulatory agreement that we put together, together with the testimony, proves a significant gap in coverage and also proves that the regulatory agreement does not violate the purposes and intent of the DCPC and therefore that it should be granted. There were, many of the comments also tonight, and I have to just point this out, have been health-related. And we respect those comments. We've sat here and listened to all of them. We've also submitted a report showing that we, that this wireless installation will fully comply with FCC regulations regarding radio frequency emissions. In fact, the report suggested even at its worst limit will be at 6% of the FCC limits. A comment was brought up as to how do you monitor that? Well, many municipalities actually provide or require annual monitoring or monitoring every five years. We would be amenable to that type of condition whereby the municipality hires an outside consultant to in fact go to the church steeple, use a monitor, and make sure that the emissions that are coming out of that installation are still well within the FCC limits. That's something that in fact the city of Cambridge does. I've permitted many installations in the city of Cambridge on hospitals, residential buildings, commercial buildings, every type of structure that you can imagine in the city of Cambridge. And every one of their decisions requires an annual monitoring that the applicant can pay for but that the municipality can govern and control. As to the town of Hingham, the town of Hingham has at least two church steeples with wireless installations. That was brought up as well. Church steeples are very commonly used. In fact, this town had the forethought to say church steeples are our number one priority because that's where you can entirely conceal a wireless antenna installation. On your general zoning bylaw, that is your number one priority, installations that are entirely concealed. And that's the path that we took. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have that are, remain outstanding for the applicant or that remain outstanding relative to the regulatory agreement.
I think we may have a couple more questions.
Of course.
Fred? You have a question for the attorney?
No, I don't have a question. I have a question regarding this. I just need to know what this is about.
This is from the public. You have a question for somebody from the public.
I just need to know what kind of phones that you used.
So we'd like to, just a clarification. I'll ask for one clarification from the woman who submitted this. If you could just tell me, or you can tell the attorney what phone you used. That's the only thing we need to know. What kind of a phone that you used? That's right, just, you can just...
It's an iPhone 7? 7. It's brand new. I just got it at the T-Mobile store in Hyannis.
We're just asking what the, what the...
I think you might just need to state it on the record.
Oh. It's an iPhone 7 that was purchased recently at the T-Mobile store in Hyannis.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
And my phone was the Verizon phone that you see there as well.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then you have a question with regards to, well, you can ask the attorney to...
Ryan, can you come up? So you have a question for T-Mobile's RF engineer? Sure.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening. There seems to be, in my mind, a huge difference between what you developed for the peer reviewer and what is the result here of this iPhone test, so to speak. And it calls to my mind, if I remember correctly, that you stated here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that you used a significantly stronger phone than they would have used here. Is that, am I correct in that recollection?
No.
I just, Mrs. LaSala, I just wanted to make one clarification. We didn't develop anything for the peer reviewer. The application materials that we submitted were for this board. The peer reviewer reviewed those materials, but at no point did we develop anything for the peer reviewer. In fact, there was no communication between myself and the peer reviewer.
Okay. Then I guess...
Just wanted to make sure that's clear.
It is very clear to me and the semantics are fine, but what I'm really asking is, in my mind, there seems to be a significant difference between the two outcomes that were developed. And in my mind, the question becomes, did, and was there a statement made that you used a significantly stronger phone during your test?
No, I didn't mention much. It's more sensitive.
You used a more sensitive phone?
It's a phone specifically designed to collect data and to interpret data. It's hooked up to the computer and it's monitoring all the signal level in an RSRP level and also the CIINR level. So it's more of a technical data that we need rather than just going out there and putting up your phone.
So the iPhone that was used by this Centerville group is less sensitive than what you use?
I will say that that's not an industry standard test phone that we use in an engineering aspect.
I think that they're comparing apples to oranges.
Right. And Ryan, what you stated is that the iPhones used by the abutters for their test is not in industry standards. Is that right?
They are not industry standard test phone that we use.
Correct. One is scientific.
That you used or that they used?
That the public used.
That the public used.
Thank you. So in my mind, there seems to be a significant difference between what was developed by the people in the audience and what was presented to and for the peer review. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I think I have a, there's a comment from someone from the public would like to come up.
Okay. Sure.
Just a quick comment. This is John Bros. There's a difference of opinion as to what T-Mobile thinks is the gap from what the people on Main Street has the gap. And the opinion and the experience of the people that live west of Main Street and north of Main Street. When I moved here five years ago, my T-Mobile phone, which is a flip phone, which is used by seniors who just need an alternative to a landline, did not work. My son has a smartphone which is more powerful and doesn't need as strong a signal from the cell antenna transmitter. His works. The experience in Craigville is probably quite different. I think what we need, Madam Chairman, is for you to take a poll of homeowners and ask them how satisfied they are with their signal inside their homes because a signal inside a home is weaker than it is on the street. And my neighbors who commute have their calls dropped. So these people are lucky. Their calls aren't dropped. My neighbors have their calls dropped. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any more from the public that hasn't spoken? I'm sorry, is there new information that you'd like to share? You can come up to present, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to answer it, but we can at least get it on the record.
So both, Diane Covanda...
Just, yeah, thank you.
Both of our information is coming from T-Mobile. Me going to the T-Mobile store in Hyannis and them telling me there's full coverage in every one of those places.
Understandable. Right? We've got that. Thank you.
And so you're just rolling over that and saying that that's not true. So I'm getting my information from T-Mobile, from my mom's T-Mobile phone. There's coverage everywhere and the whole point of this is for T-Mobile to get coverage.
Understandable. We've got it. Thank you. Understand. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken? Sure, come on up.
My name's Suella N. O'Neil and I live at 547 Main Street. And I just have a question about the equipment that T-Mobile uses to...
Just speak into the microphone if you can.
I'm wondering about the equipment that T-Mobile uses to perform their sensitivity and collect their sensitivity data about the ability to transmit calls. Is that a standardized method? Is that a standardized method? And is the equipment used to test in Barnstable the standardized equipment that's used to test in Florida? And do they have the standardized requirements published somewhere so that, you know, we all know that in the scientific method, the, the, the method must be standardized. And to randomly take one set of measuring points with one set of equipment and try to apply it different places is really not acceptable if it is not standardized.
I've got your question. Great. Thank you.
About the process, the drive test process, what type of phone that you use and what protocol you go to?
Okay. So basically, the process of doing a drive test is, we have what we call a certified drive test technician. So they, what we provide as an engineer based on what we're trying to cover is a drive route. So we provide a drive route for them to drive each and every road that we identify. The phone or the equipment that they use is a Thames phone. It's an industry-standard test equipment that is being used by different carriers. So what is a Thames phone? A Thames phone is basically a high-sensitive phone which basically decode, interpret the conversation of your mobile phone towards the cell tower. So that communication are being transferred to a computer, and what the computer does, the software does, is try to decode all that conversation that happens in a millisecond from switching on your phone, from starting up the, the drive test, from when the phone is in connection, when the phone starts getting the, the, what do you call this, the, the information coming from the cell tower, and also that communication between the phone, the cell tower, and the neighboring phone. There, there are a lot of information that is being decoded on a computer, which basically we try to, we, we looked into, we interpret, and we process it so that it can be readable in a format that I presented to. So we try to evaluate all those information. There are layered messages that happens in a millisecond in between the phone, the conversation from the phone and to the base station. What are the, the signal level in terms of the RSRP signal level? It's, it's a phone that is on idle mode has a different signal characteristic as, as compared to a phone when it's on a dedicated mode or when the phone is attached to the network and having exchanges of data back and forth. So we look into all those data that we gathered. And in some cases, some of the disinformation are converted into, there are some information that we also get in cases where a drop call happened. For a, for a normal person, a drop call is just a disconnection, but for us, it can be a variety of things. It can be, it's not just a signal level. It may be a, there's a quality issue, maybe there's a protocol that was not followed by the mobile phone and the, and the signal level, or is there any missing information in between the process of communicating from the phone to the, to the cell tower? So those are the information that we looked into, and that's basically part of the drive test process. So we have a log file to basically process all this information and read it, interpret it, and, and basically convert it into something that can be readable in a layman's term.
Great. Thank you. Unless there's something, come on up.
Again, Mike Curley. What you're, Walter's referring to, I think before, I'm not an attorney, but it's called a rabbit hole, when an attorney brings up something that's probably not pertinent to the conversation, but when you say a millisecond, a millisecond is 5G. The phones we have and what the letter I sent to the board on January 25th explained that. We don't have 5G phones. He has a 5G phone. That's data. He's talking into a phone, into a computer, and the computer is transcribing that in one second. It's one millimeter. It's less than a second. It's not used today. It's for the future. I've explained this four different times. I'm frustrated. I apologize for being frustrated. It's not being used today. If you want to ask him a question, it's a 5G phone. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to close the public comment.
We'll hear that, we'll hear one more comment, and then we'll-
I apologize. Sorry, I didn't even see you come up.
That's okay.
We're just trying to move this along.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I have to make, ask a question and make a suggestion. My name is Anthony Ambrogio. I live in Centerville on Lombard Mill Road. I've been listening to this latest conversation here, and I think, first of all, the gentleman says they have very sensitive phones. Okay. The sensitive phones were, were getting dropped calls. The people with just the crummy old regular phones were not getting dropped calls. So there's a problem here, right? Because it should be the other way around, that they should have calls that drop, and these people could pick up more calls even though they're going to find dead areas. Okay? Now, to my question, trying to figure this out, my suggestion is this. You're bombarded with all kinds of things here. It would seem to me, if, if this question of coverage is so crucial, that some of you people here should get together with a couple of people here and with somebody over here and go around and actually test all of these places. How else are you going to know whether what we're being told here is correct or whether you can believe the people here who went and did their own tests? You know, since this is, it, gentleman over here is a very good lawyer.
Just, just to clarify, that was the reason why we had the peer review that was done.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
All right.
But thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to close the public comment? Madam Chair.
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Opposed? One opposed. Okay. The public hearing is now closed. At this point, I'm going to ask if anyone has any more additional discussion or if someone would like to make a motion.
Can I just, can I ask Mr. Edwards to come up for a moment, please? I have a question, and I'm, you're the only one I'm comfortable asking this to as the person that was hired by the town. Members of this particular audience asked about property value decreases. In your field, which I realize this wasn't the scope, and if you're not comfortable answering this, please don't do it, but can you speak to that at all? Like I said, I know you're an expert in this area, so I think you're the only one that would be appropriate to ask this question to.
Well, I'm actually an electrical engineer, so I understand, you know, the propagation methods and the, and that, and so it's kind of sensitive for me to answer that. I will say that I've been in hearings where that's been brought up before, and I've heard the other side argue the opposite, so, but I don't have any data on property values. I've heard that argument before, but I don't really have any comment on that, to that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask if anybody else has any questions on the, from the board, and if not, I'll ask for a motion.
I do have a question. And this is really for probably Ruth or the town attorneys. So we, we've heard from both attorneys, Mr. Revere and Mr. Souza, regarding the DP, DCPC, and its sort of appropriateness of the town council July 16, 2009, specifically stating that antennas and wireless equipment are not permitted uses. Can I just get the town to provide an answer from our perspective or your perspective? Because that seems to be a pretty important point.
For the record, Ruth Wild, Town Attorney. Can you please reframe the question?
So, as, as part of the argument for the, for the folks sort of in opposition to this, Mr. Revere's letter, one of his points that I personally would like clarification for because I think Mr. Souza had pretty much the opposite opinion in terms of the appropriateness. So based on the, the town council, Barnstable Town Council on July 16, 2009, and subsequently approved by the Cape Cod Commission, Town Ordinances, Section 240-130, antennas and wireless equipment are not permitted uses within the Centerville DCPC zone? So I just want to know, is that, is that actually the case?
There are a number of uses that are not permitted within the Centerville DCPC. If you look at Section 240-130.3B, there are only a limited number of principal uses, which are ice cream specialty retail, mixed-use development, professional or business office, single-family residence, small-scale food service, small-scale retail, bed and breakfast in. And then they're subject to the use limitations, the franchise use, you can't have 7-Eleven, for example. So those are the permitted uses. There is a provision, and it's, it was, it's my understanding that it was adopted as part of the DCPC, which was approved by the Cape Cod, the Assembly of Delegates, the Cape Cod Commission, which specifically says that other uses of an appropriate scale and function may also be considered subject to the regulatory agreement. So I think that is the job of this board, but there is a qualifier. It has to be of appropriate scale and function, and that really is one of the tasks before you is to analyze whether, based in the information presented, whether you believe that it is, it is of appropriate scale and function in light of the purposes of the DCPC, you know, the historical nature of that part of the village, et cetera. Is that responsive?
That's very responsive. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure?
I just want to make a quick statement. In my time on this board, precedence has been something that's been very important to me. Nothing's worse when you're sitting in this seat and a developer or something along those lines comes to you and says, well, you did it for this guy. So you got to do it for me. So I learned my lesson quick. What I will say is, and I want to get this on the record, and thank you, Madam Chair, is we, and I realize legally they were different, we just had a peer review for another cell tower, and we accepted that. I think it would be dangerous, just in my opinion, just speaking for myself, to accept that one and not accept this one. I disagree a lot with what Mr. Revere says, however, there is something I totally agree with, which is he called them proffers. And my opinion is that, you know, just cell service is not enough. That's not the spirit of, in my opinion, the, a regulatory agreement. There needs to be more public benefit out of that. So I just wanted to get that on the record, you know, as a, as I believe we're getting close to a vote.
Great. Thank you. Can I ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the regulatory agreement number 2019-01.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. So one point of clarification, because of the complexity of this application, I realize it is not traditional for the planning board to make findings in response to a regulatory agreement application, but in this case, again, the, the planning board highly encourages, or the staff highly encourages the planning board to make findings, and we, we do have some prepared.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other discussion with regards to this? So the, so we'll need to review the findings prior to the vote? Elizabeth?
Correct. So Mr. Foran made a motion to deny the regulatory agreement. We would ask that the motion be amended to make findings in support of that denial.
So.
You want to get the first page? Pat, now get the second?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Well, do you want to amend your motion?
With regards to the findings.
Okay. I'll make an amendment to my motion that the regulatory agreement number 2019, 2019-1 is denied based on the following findings. Number one, on January 10, 2019, T-Mobile Northeast LLC herein after T-Mobile or applicant, together with the South Congressional Church Incorporated, filed a regulatory agreement application pursuant to Chapter 168 to install six wireless communication antennas together with remote radio heads, RRH, within the existing steeple of the South Congressional Church at the center, centerline height of 60 feet. Further, appurtenance base transceiver equipment consisting of equipment cabinets and ancillary equipment will be installed in the basement of the church. Number two, Chapter 168 of the Town Ordinances allow the town and qualified applicant to enter into a regulatory agreement, quote, "a contract entered into in between town of Barnstable and holder of property development rights, the principal purpose of which is to negotiate, to establish the development regulations that will apply to the subject property during the terms of the agreement and to establish the conditions to which the development will be subject," end quote. The subject property is a regulatory agreement district also as shown on the regulatory agreement maps referenced in Section 168-1, parentheses B, close parenthesis, and Section 240-131.1, parentheses B, close parenthesis. The applicant, together with the property owner, is eligible to apply for regulatory agreement under Section 240-130, excuse me, point three, permitted uses, which states, quote, "other uses of appropriate scale and function may also be considered subject to a regulatory agreement," end quote. Number three, Section 240-130.5, parentheses A, and parentheses, establishes the sections of the Barnstable code that incorporated into the Centerville Village District, sections of that code that are not explicitly listed in this subsection are not considered applicable within the Centerville Village District Article X, personal wireless communication of the zoning ordinances, parentheses, subsection 240-106-240-109, end parentheses, and is not incorporated into the Centerville Village District. Thus, wireless telecommunications facilities are not permitted, are not considered a permitted use in the Centerville Village District. Number four, the Cape Cod Commission Act defines, quote, "district of critical planning concern," end quote, or DCPC, as a, quote, "geographic area of Cape Cod identified by the commission as required special protection and designated by the Assembly of Delegates in accordance with the criteria, procedures, and requirements set forth in Sections 10 and 11," end quote. Chapter 716 of the Acts of 1989, as amended to Section 2, parentheses J, the Centerville Village District DCPC comprising 7.4 plus-minus acres and 13 parcels was approved by the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates in May of 2008. Pursuant to Section 10 of the Act, the DPC, the DCPC implementing regulations were adopted by the town council on July 16, 2009, subsequently approved by the Cape Cod Commission and codified under Section 240-130 of the Code. Number five, regulations contained in Sections 240-130 through 240-130.8 are adopted DCPC implementing regulations. These regulations are the means by which all development is regulated within the district, grandfathering provisions, and/or non-conforming rights conferred by master general law, Chapter 40A, do not apply within the DCPC such as the Centerville Village Districts.
Since this is pretty long, we've split it up, Pat, so you don't have to read the whole thing. Fred?
Thank you, Mary. Six, the subject property is a 1.38-acre lot located at the intersection of Main Street and Churchill Road in Centerville. The lot is improved with the Greek Revival-style South Congregational Church of Centerville, a contributing building in a National Register Historic District built circa 1796. Seven, according to Section 240-130 dot one, the purposes and intent of the Centerville Village District are to guide development and redevelopment in the Centerville Village that, A, promote a location, appropriate scale, and traditional mix of business, institutional and residential land uses that contribute to and respect the historic character and historic neighborhood development patterns. B, acknowledges the historic context of the village. village, including the National Registered District, which encompasses properties in the northern portion of the district; C, protects and preserves the historic and scenic streetscape and minimizes traffic congestion; D, provides a variety of functions that supports residents' day-to-day use of the district; E, supports and enhances the diverse local economy and retains established villages, village goods and service offerings; F, preserves and protects the traditional New England village character of Centerville through architectural design that replicates in scale and character the best examples of traditional neighborhood design from the historic towns and villages of Cape Cod and New England to enhance the aesthetic quality of Barnstable as a whole. The further purpose and intent of this section is to enable the town of Barnstable to enter into development agreements, in parentheses, here and after, in quotes, "regulatory agreements," end quote, under chapter one six eight of the Code of the Town of Barnstable, and in parentheses, Barnstable Code, within the Centerville Village District, and in parentheses, C V D. Number eight, the character of commercial land uses in this area are small-scale in nature and are located in historic or residential-style structures, not typical large-scale commercial buildings typically found in suburban or urban areas. This indicates that the signal strength to support in-building commercial coverages identified as, in in parentheses, optimal by T-Mobile, is not necessary to provide adequate coverage, given the unique character of the area, land uses, and structure. Nine, alterations proposed as part of this application will impact the historic integrity of a building included on the National Register of Historic Places. The cables connecting the antennae to the equipment room are routed along the building's exterior at the rear of the church. Exterior alterations include the installation of a cable chaise at the southeast corner of the church, the use of cable support clips to secure cables under the soffit of the church annex, and the installation of an outdoor H V A C condenser unit along the north elevation of the annex. The cable chaise is installed over the church's cornice and tabula tur and corner pilasters, altering and obscuring architectural features noted in South Congregational Church's nomination for inclusion in the Register of Historic Places, and in parentheses, Barnstable Multiple Resource Area nineteen eighty-seven. The use of support clips to secure cables under the soffit of the annex leave cables clearly visible. No screening is provided for the H V A C unit installed on the north elevation of the annex, directly adjacent to the church's cemetery. Although section one oh six documentation indicates these alterations will be limitly visible from the surrounding historic district, exterior alterations are clearly visible from Churchill Road, a public way within the Centerville Historic District.
Number ten, section two forty dash one thirty point three, the D C P implementation regulations limits the type of use that may be considered under a regulatory agreement to those in parentheses, uses of appropriate scale and function, end parentheses, based upon the above-described adverse impact that the placement of six wireless communication antennas, together with remote radio heads, in parentheses, R R H, close parentheses, within the existing steeple of the South Congregational Church at a centerline height of sixty feet within the upon-exterior of the South Congress, excuse me, South Congregational Church, by compromising the historical integrity of the building included on the National Registry of Historical Places, comma. The planning board finds that the purpose used is not one of, parentheses, "an appropriate scale and function," close parentheses, to be considered use in the D C P C. Number eleven, the planning board acknowledges the federal limitations precluded in its regu, regulations that the placement, construction, and modification of personal wire services facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequencies emissions, to the extent that such facilities comply with the F C C regulations concerning such emissions. Number twelve, the predicted composite coverage map shows the current coverage of all frequencies that indicates, and then in parentheses, the words "outdoor," close parentheses, and, in parentheses, "in-vehicle," close parentheses, signal levels that are adequate, comma, while, parentheses, "in-building residential," close parentheses, signal levels that are adequate in a majority, comma, but not on the targeted, parentheses, "problem area," close parentheses, as identified by T-Mobile as the parentheses, close, search ring, close parentheses, shown on the exhibit entitled, parentheses, "search ring polygon" on Google Earth, close parentheses. The area encompassing the Craigville Beach, comma, "a popular tourist destination," comma, is shown in having adequate, having, having adequate, parentheses, "in-building residential," close parentheses, the word "coverage," number thirteen. The problem area, in parentheses, as identified by T-Mobile as the parentheses "search ring," shown on the exhibit entitled, parentheses, "search ring polygon" on Google Earth, close parentheses, comma, and identified by T-Mobile, parentheses, "T-Mobile's radio frequency experts," close parentheses, as, parentheses, "an area within the wireless communication installation is required to provide coverage to a significant gap in its coverage network," close parentheses. This area is predominantly a single-family residential nature. Only an estimated three percent of properties within the search ring have commercial land use. The applicant has identified, parentheses, "in-building commercial," close parentheses, level coverage as, parentheses, "suboptimal," close parentheses, comma, but the level of coverages does not reflect the predominant land use in the area hyphen, which is residential, comma, and which the above hyphen resident, reference map shown has adequate, parentheses, "in-building residential," close parentheses, coverage.
Thank you. There's only six more pages to go, so everybody relax. Number fourteen, the Centerville-Osterville Marston Mills Water Tower, located at three forty-five Old Stage Road, was identified as a possible alternative location for an antenna installation. The water tower is located at a higher sea level elevation than the Congregational Church, fifty-eight feet versus forty-seven feet, parentheses, N A V D eighty-eight, respectively, and currently contains multiple antenna installations and apparent structures. T-Mobile testified that as, that an antenna installation on this tower would be outside of the identified, quote, "search ring," and we would not provide, quote, "optimal" coverage within the identified, quote, "problem area." But no evidence was submitted to the record identifying the level of coverage that would result from an installation at the water tower location. Fifteen, T-Mobile indicated that they recently acquired a six hundred band license that is in the process of being deployed. The impact of the acquisition and deployment on the coverage levels in the subject area have not been identified or accounted for when considering the need for the installation at five sixty-five South Main Street. Sixteen, T-Mobile represented that it explored other locations and determined that it neither, that either none were superior to the proposed location, or that if potentially superior, it would be impossible to secure permissions from the owners to install the proposed equipment in such locations. With respect to the latter group of potential locations, T-Mobile representatives offered no factual basis or evidence to support the conclusion that they had even contacted such property owners, or that they had attempted to initiate contract negotiations for this purpose. The board therefore finds that T-Mobile has not proven that it has no other equally viable and technically equivalent or superior location at which to install its equipment. Seventeen, based upon these findings, the planning board cannot recommend the execution of the regulatory agreement.
Great. Thank you. So, we have the findings that's been presented. There's a motion on the table to accept the findings as presented. And could I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the findings presented as stated? Okay. Thank you. And we have one more vote, which is now, we've, we've approved the findings. We need a vote to reject the proposed development agreement. So, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion. I make a motion to reject in total the regulatory agreement as proposed by T-Mobile.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion's passed. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for your time. Okay, we're moving on to our next item. The meeting is still in progress, just so you know. The next media, the next item on the agenda is a special permit. We have two special permits in front of us. The first one is special permit number two zero one nine dash zero one, and it's Zero Engine Road.
You guys were first.
If you guys could, could just keep it down a little bit. We're still, we still have a meeting in motion. Thank you. Oh, yeah. I'm just going to read through these. I'll read it, just to keep it moving. Special permit number two zero one nine dash zero one, Zero Engine Road, Hyannis, Hyannis map, three two eight parcel, two four one, dash, R F and R M L L P seeks to modification to a special permit number two zero one six dash three, which permitted a paid-to-park parking lot in the well-protection overlay district under section two four zero dash twenty-four point one point nine point B, parentheses, one, of the zoning ordinance. Petition number two zero one nine dash zero one has been submitted to reconfigure the approved parking lot in connection with a plan to expand, extend the parking lot into a neighboring lot at Nine Engine House Road. There is a second item that's also on the agenda as part of this, and this is the special permit two zero one nine dash oh two. So, these are both being read together and presented together. The second portion is for Nine Engine House Road, Hyannis map, three two eight parcel, two zero four, Hyannis Harbor Tours, Inc., seeks a special permit under section two four zero dash two four point one point nine point B, point parentheses, one, for a pay-to-park parking lot with one hundred and seventeen spaces within the wellhead protection overlay district, which includes placement of curb stops, fencing, and signage. The petition number is two zero one nine dash oh two, and it seeks to expand the existing parking lot of Zero Engine House Road, originally permitted through a special permit two zero one six dash zero three, and proposed for modification through a separate application. Just for those who have, who've been following this, this is the first read for this particular special permit. And again, it's two be, two permits being presented at the same time. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on both two zero one nine dash oh one and two zero one nine dash oh two.
Madam Chair, may I please make a motion to open the public hearing on both of these items before us?
Great. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Public hearing is now open. I'll ask the applicant to present. Thank you very much for your patience.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Dan Creedon. I'm here this evening with Marty Riley on behalf of R F and R M L L P and Hyannis Harbor Tours, Inc. Madam Chair, if we could, we'd like to address these applications before the board in reverse order, take up two thousand nineteen oh two, which is the request for a new special permit for Nine Engine House Road. And before I begin, I'd ask, Madam Chair, if I could allow Mr. Riley to just give some background and some history as to what was the genesis for this, these applications before the board this evening?
Sure. That'd be great. Is the green light on? Try it again.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Marty Riley, and I'm here on behalf of High Line Cruises, who was the applicant in both of these matters before the board tonight. And I just wanted to explain to you that the genesis of the application to modify the permit for Zero Engine House Road, and then to also seek the special permit for Nine Engine House Road, was created by the fact that, for the three previous years, we had leased an adjacent lot, two zero engine house road, from the C C R T A for off-site parking. And the C C R T A needed that space back for parking as well. So, because of that, we sought out to acquire the adjacent parcel on the other side of Zero Engine House Road, which is Nine Engine House Road, to use it for the very same type of use that we previously used the C C R T A lot for. So, they'll be continuing to use their lot for surface parking, and we're before you tonight to modify the permit we got in two sixteen for Zero Engine House Road in conjunction with the special permit for Nine Engine House Road. And the reason for that modification is to accommodate in a better way, as Attorney Creedon will reference, the handicap needs, as well as the public safety access needs for fire apparatus and emergency vehicles. So, thank you for your consideration tonight. And I know Attorney Creedon has a detailed presentation that he'll make relative to our proposals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry. So, this is an application under two thousand nineteen oh two, under two forty twenty-four one nine B one, to permit a paid-to-park parking lot, to serve as ferry and general public parking on a self-catered basis, kiosk-controlled. And I, as I said, the request is under two forty twenty-four one nine B one, which requires, while this is a principal permitted use in this zone, because this is the area within the town where the planners determined to locate transportation-related uses, parking is, by its nature, a transportation-related use. The fact that it's also co-located in a W P, Wellhead Protection Overlay District, requires review and approval from this board for a special permit. We have submitted the site plan with the application, a copy of the lease which establishes that the applicant has control. We have a lease from the owners of the property, Mr. Gary Beard and Mr. Andrew Beard, I believe, that was executed in December of eighteen, and also an authorization letter from the owners of the property to present this, these applications this evening. So, what we're proposing at Nine Engine House is a new lot that would be located to the westerly end, which, if you're on Engine House Road, or Transportation Way, as it's called, it's to the back of the lot. The Beards will continue to use the front, in the building located on the front of the lot, for their own use. We're proposing one hundred and twelve spaces, nine by twenty, just typical size, no one, no subcompact or compact spaces as part of this application. We're also proposing to install new fencing to separate the leased area from the area being retained by the owner for their own use, curb stop, signage, lighting, security surveillance cameras, per the plan submitted by the engineer, John O'Day. We cannot in any way comply with the internal landscape. We cannot in any way comply with the internal landscaping design requirements. We're asking freely from those, as we have in the past, because we're looking to utilize as much of the lot as possible, and asking for the board's consideration to install the perimeter landscape parking along Transportation Way in lieu of the internal landscaping requirements. We're also proposing to install new drainage structures to augment what's there and to increase the capacity to accept the stormwater flow that currently is at the property. So under 240-2419B1, that's the category, and the zoning ordinance is specifically accepted for the grant of a special permit. Now, in the TD, because it is a Hyannis Village Business District, you have two sets of site, I'm sorry, strike that, two sets of special permit considerations to look at. One is under 240-2419D1, and those are at small A, B, C, and D. The first three nature and extent of the risk of contamination, and is basically unchanged from the current use. The current use at this time is that it's being used for what I would call cold storage or dead storage of vehicles. And what we're basically proposing to do is to continue to park vehicles there, which has been the historic use of this portion of this property. So in terms of risk of contamination to the wellhead, nothing is changing. What I do rely on more heavily there, under 240-2419D1 considerations, is that it accommodates an overriding community interest, and that is relieving traffic congestion and parking at the waterfront area, which is a problem. And it's the same rationale that I presented to this board on two prior occasions, first for Zero Engine House Road, the westerly portion, then also for the easterly portion of Zero Engine House Road and 183 Hyano Road. The second set of considerations is under the general provisions for the Hyannis Village District, so that's 240-241-212E1. Sorry, I get lost in here. So under the first section, the question arises is whether this is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan. The staff report points out that it is, in that it promotes traffic reduction and alternative modes of transportation at the waterfront area. I would suggest that would do this. One thing that has changed since the last two times we were here for these properties in, in this area, in the TD, is that the Highline has implemented its own shuttle to service these lots, and that is in place, and it's been operating well for approximately a year now. When I first came before you, I think a couple, three years ago for Zero Engine House Road, that was one of the calls of the board to consider that. We didn't have it in place at that time. And then thereafter, when we came back for the rest of Zero Engine House, we were talking about doing something in conjunction with the CCRTA. And now, the applicant has gone full-on and has implemented its own shuttle. And I think that speaks directly to these considerations under both the design and infrastructure plan, and the rest of the general provisions under 240-2412E. The rest of those, there is a list of approximately 10 to consider when considering the overall special permit standard, which is whether what's being proposed is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. And those that we can fulfill, it says one or more, I would suggest, small A, under 240-2412E, that this provides for, if granted, mixed use at the property, in that the Beards will continue to use the front for the building that's located there, and then parking at the rear, that would provide for a mixed use of the whole of the property, if you consider the whole of the property. It would improve pedestrian access to the harbor front, and keep, by keeping it clear of traffic, traffic congestion, and additional parked cars, by moving the parked cars away from the waterfront area. And it would provide for alternative transportation in the form of the shuttle, and definitely it would provide, most emphatically, for travel demand management at those peak times of travel, when people are seeking to move through what is the waterfront hub area, which is a critical choke point, really, of point, port of debarkation for the islands, as we know. So I think this is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan, and I think it's consistent with the special permit requirements. I'd suggest to the board that we have a track record that has been built here over time for these, these applicants in this area. This is seeking to just shift what was happening on the CCRTA property by lease two, from the south to the north, on the Beard property. There is a net add. I'm not saying it's a one-for-one. There was approximately 64 spaces at the CCRTA. We're proposing 112 here. But, you know, I'd, I'd ask the board to consider the track record that's been built by these applicants in successfully operating in, these properties in these areas for this purpose, and the benefit that is conferred on the waterfront area by limiting the congestion there. And, and, and they've, they've been responsible property owners, and they, they run a good business, and they run these properties very well, they're well-managed, and they, they look, they look nice, they've done what they've been permitted to do. So that's what I would pause it to the board under the, oh, two, under, oh, one, we've secretly, I'm sorry, we've simply asked for a modification of 2016-03, the existing special permit for the westerly portion of Zero Engine House Road, to do three things. Reduce the overall number of spaces from 117 to 112. That's to accommodate a reconfiguration, to allow for access for both the public and for emergency vehicles through Zero Engine House Road, through to Nine Engine House Road, so that they would be operated together. We are asking to locate the required ADA compliance spaces for Nine Engine House on Zero Engine House Road, co-locate them next to the existing ADA compliant spaces, which does comply, we had this discussion at site plan review, with the MAAAB requirements, and also just to reconfigure the layout, like I said, to accommodate the access. So the request for the modification to 2016-03 is to accommodate the request for special permit at, at Nine Engine House Road, and one is not needed without the other. So I'd ask you to, if you do consider them, when you do consider them, that you consider them in that order as well, because we would not be seeking the modification but for the grant of the special permit at Nine Engine House Road. Be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. I'll ask for the board, if they have any questions for the applicant? Fred? Do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I was waiting for you to finish writing.
Sorry, just writing your name, Elizabeth Silva.
That's okay. Will this change alleviate the Ocean Street congestion? Yes or no?
I believe that it will, yes.
Okay. And is anything being done to mitigate the amount of traffic that will be created because of the existing lots that are there? In other words, those are full, and when they're full, they create a lot of traffic.
Sure.
So how does this create a reduction of the Ocean Street traffic jams?
People will drive directly to this lot when it becomes known to them that it exists, and my client will make that clear to them, and they won't drive to the waterfront. They'll drive their cars to the transportation district, park their cars, and take a shuttle down to the waterfront, so that will eliminate those car trips to that area.
I'm done.
Jeff?
Fred made an excellent point. Just a suggestion, maybe that there could be some signage, you know, I think you know what I mean, just to, so they don't go down there, so they go right there. Don't know where you would put it, but that's just a suggestion. I drop off and pick up a friend down there quite often, and the one thing that I would ask is that you guys really start looking at the cabs and the Ubers and the lifts, and really bottlenecking that area. You know, I was there the other day, there was two, there was two fishing boats unloading, I mean, I couldn't even move, I was worried about kids getting hurt. I think that is something that needs to really be taken into consideration. I realize not, it's not a part of it, but you have always been amenable to taking these types of suggestions in this, in this type of forum. And then the, the last question that I have is you, correct me on the last time you were here, you spoke about having to do an address change, sort of a merger, has that, am I wrong?
I know we discussed it. I think we, it was left to the discretion of the town in terms of 911 labeling and wanting to be able to know, I know that Deputy Chief Melanson had a concern about his people knowing where they're going, if and when there was a call, but I don't know where it has gone since then.
So my last question, and thank you, is, since we are talking about sort of a net gain here, have we, do we have a sign-off of the fire department that their apparatus will be, you know, be able to get in and out of there?
Yeah, we definitely do. This was designed in conjunction with Deputy Chief Melanson.
Just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you, Attorney Creedon.
Elizabeth?
And if I can just make one extremely brief follow-up related to your comment, Jeff, about sort of congestion and taxi cabs at the harbor. Planning and Development has been working with Highline, as well as the Harbor Masters Office and the Department of Public Works, to sort of look in a very detailed way at that area, including town-owned Bismore property, right there, to hopefully streamline some of the interactions. We have, again, commercial fishing boats loading and unloading, you have Uber and lifts sort of queuing up, as well as ferry passenger and drop-off. So in cooperation with Highline, we're actually bringing forward on Thursday to a first-rate town council, a request for some supplemental funding to implement an interdepartmental plan we've put together to help alleviate some of the conflicts, longstanding conflicts that we've had in the area. We think it's a short-term solution, but we think it'll certainly be one that will improve conditions tremendously this season over last.
Thank you. My suggestion to that is, I think that's wonderful. The one thing I would like to see is like you see at Fenway Park or some other areas where there's designated Uber and Lyft, you know, regulated where they're supposed to pick up. I think that, that would be good for your business, quite honestly, as well. Thank you, and thank you, Elizabeth. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Just as, if I can, as a supplement to that, we have been working very closely with Elizabeth on this, and her staff, and trying to come up with some recommendations that would improve that for all parties down there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of thoughts. So the, the parking lot is, will it be fully fenced in and secure, and just in terms of how it operates from a safety standpoint?
It will. It's already fenced on three sides at this time, and we're adding, proposing to add a split rail fence between the area that will remain under the control of the landlord, lessor, and the leased area.
Okay. And just totally off-base question, just in terms of the transportation, there's a lot of pedestrians, too, that come back and forth, which is a nice way to walk. Is there a thought about maybe opening up the shuttles to just pedestrians that may not be using this Highline, and hop on and maybe get a ride up to Hyannis Main Street?
What has happened up there is we've worked very closely with the CCRTA on everything that they're doing, and the CCRTA has, I believe, going to institute for this season an enhanced shuttle to take people from the CCRTA-related properties, including our properties, down to the Main Street Business District, and then down to the harbor and to both locations. But the Highline ferry is pretty much directed for people coming directly to the, to the boats, but yet the parking lot serves both ferry customers as well as the general public. So the general public piece is served by the CCRTA through sort of a public-private partnership to enhance intermodal connectivity for everybody, either using the ferries or going downtown to help the businesses.
Good, yeah, that's, that was my hope, to get a little more cross-pollination among the other business on Main Street, too. So thank you.
Yeah, Walter? Okay.
I don't think, this is for both, just, I just want to make sure we have clarification for both that are, yeah, that are in front. At this point, we'll open it up to the public.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Felicia Penn from Hyannis. I submitted a letter, I think you probably got it in your packets, thank you, I hope you've all read it. My major concern in the, in the letter, just to summarize, was the negative impact on long-term plans being developed by the RTA in this area for surrounding acreage, and for, and to please consider putting a time limit on the permit for the, for the new thing. I have further issues relating to the need for more parking at this location, and some issues with the staff report. So I direct your attention to pages three and four of the staff report under suggested permit findings. Basically, statements number six, seven, and eight. Specifically regarding number six, I direct you to the statement found on the bottom of page two. It's also found in my letter, and it was found in the original staff report from 2016, and it says, "These lots," which means surface parking lots, once established, act as a strong economic disincentive to property redevelopment and contribute little to the vibrancy of downtown or to the year-round economy." I didn't write that. The staff wrote it. And they didn't just write it now, they wrote it in 2016, when the first permit came before the planning board. That statement alone indicates that this usage here is detrimental to the public good, and does not fulfill the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. Any usage that serves as an economic disincentive to redevelopment of property when we know that the RTA has been working since 2012 on plans to redevelop the 11 acres that are out there. I have a draft from that time. It didn't go forward at that time for fairly political reasons, but they're still working on doing that. Any usage that you permit forever to serve as an economic disincentive, I believe, does not fulfill the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. And specifically regarding numbers seven and eight, for these to be true, it would mean that 112 spaces that are now planned, that are new on, for Nine Engine House Road, are being removed from the harbor and relocated here. Is this true? I don't think so. Haven't seen it anywhere. There's no reduction in parking at the harbor, because you're going to permit these two lots here. There's no reduction. This is an additional 64 spaces to the sum they'd had before, for, for a total increase between the two lots. There's no reduction at the harbor. And if there is, I would jump up and down for joy, and I would like somebody to show us where that reduction will occur. Or, do you need, you know, I don't even know why you need more spaces. Why do you need more spaces? We had sufficient spaces last year, unless there's going to be an increase of service to the islands. And if the increase of service to the islands is going to be expanded, then we probably should need to, this board needs to know that. If spaces are not being relocated from the harbor area to this area, then the statements in number seven and eight, I claim were kind of invalid. The public good is also not served well if issuing additional special permits for parking impedes the economic development of the RTA property. So I ask that you add number 13 to page five, which will indicate the length of time the special permit is valid. If you don't place a timeframe on this special permit, this parcel will be a surface parking If you don't place a timeframe on this special permit, this parcel will be a surface parking lot forever. Trust me, I live next to Highline. Every single special permit that they have in residential property has been forever, since 1984. That's forever if you live there, trust me. I don't think that surface parking areas is what the RTA or the town has in mind when they're talking about redeveloping the old Penn Central property, which is now owned by the RTA. We all know this is not the highest and best use of this property, we all know that this is not what zoning demands. If it did, a special permit wouldn't be required. In this situation, we have kind of a different situation, special permits are filed on the Registry of Deeds, and I'm not sure how this is going to work. So, I'm assuming that the permit stays with the property versus the leasing, which means that the Beards will be property, they're the property owners right now, they'll be the owners of the special permit because Highline is the operator of the parking lot, they don't own the land at this point, which probably tells me they'll be purchasing it soon, but at this point in time, if the special permit is in fact filed, it's, it goes to the Registry of Deeds, so it's the deed of the property, and if they're not the owners of the property, that might be another motivating reason why you would consider doing a limited timeframe on the special permit for Nine-Engine House Road. So in summary, I'm hoping that you would find that this does not fulfill the spirit and intent of the zoning, that you find that traffic is not directed away from the harbor unless spaces at the harbor are removed, that you find that surface lots are not the intended long-term use of this acreage, and if you choose to issue the permit, that you please make it temporary, two, three, four years, whatever, but not forever, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll just ask if there's anyone else who wanted to speak? Okay.
I was on the zoning board for 10 years, we never issued a special permit that was limited as to time, I don't know of any mechanism to do it, my client has to invest capital in this property to make leasehold improvements to accommodate this use, the return on investment is impacted negatively if the special permit were to be limited in time, I'm asking the board not to consider that. This is the transportation district, this is the area within the town that the planners of this town saw fit to designate for parking. The design and infrastructure plan designates to locate additional parking away from the harbor, to take the traffic congestion away from the harbor, because that's a choke point, that's what this does, it does not eliminate spaces at the harbor, what it does is, it's a services, a demand, because there's an over-demand for the existing spaces, no one said we were going to be eliminating spaces, spaces at the harbor front, that's not what is proposed here, we're trying to take demand away from the harbor front to lessen congestion and to make things more manageable during peak travel times. The language about precluding further redevelopment, I don't believe is, was stated in relation to this district within the town, this does not preclude further redevelopment when you're considering an area of the town that's a district, that's designated by the planners for transportation-related uses, the whole area is parking. As far as the RTA's long-term plans, they can plan for redesigning and redeveloping what they own, they don't own Zero-Engine House Road, they don't own 183 Iano Road, and they don't own Nine-Engine House Road, their plans for long-term planning for this area speak to the property that they own, they can't make plans to redevelop property owned by others, and that's what's before the board.
Great, thank you.
If I might just, if I might add something to what Attorney Creedon has said, Highline has worked very cooperatively with the town of Barnstable as well as the CCRTA, we're in constant dialogue and communications with them because we're an integral part of the year-round public-private ferry transportation system as well as the intermodal system, so we've always expressed an interest to cooperate with the CCRTA and the town on any plans that they have going forward, and we've always said that as long as we have parking up there, that's the most important thing, and we'll continue to do so, so, you know, respectfully, as Attorney Creedon said, you know, we would request that the permit, if we do get it, be a permanent permit, yet we would always continue to work with the town as we have, the Highline is very, a good corporate citizen in the community here, and we certainly have the overall best interest of the town going forward, and, you know, this effort to permit that property that we're talking about today, as well as some of the others, has been an effort on our part to continually shift some of our parking off-site to minimize some congestion through the shuttle system, because Highline owns some of its lots on Ocean Street, but it leases others, and at some point in time, if those properties are ever sold, and they don't, and they're not used for parking anymore, then it's critically important that we always have enough up there in the area that's properly zoned for this use in the TD district, so we thank you for your consideration, and we welcome the opportunity to continue to work with the town and the CCRTA going forward, and respectfully ask that these permits be permanent, as has been the case in the past.
I'll just ask if there's any other comments from the public? Okay, and at this point, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing, Madam Chair?
Sure, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, public hearing's now closed, I'll ask the board if they've got any additional questions for the applicant, I think Fred, do you have any additional questions?
I have more, more of my questions.
Okay.
Um, man, sorry, this is, it might be for Mr. Riley, I don't know if it's for you, Attorney Creedon. I understand where Ms. Penn is coming from, however, at the same point, trying to look at this globally, what is, if you look at last year, where you guys added, how many buses?
I don't know the exact number, but I would say we have four, at least four shuttles.
And how much, how much do you think that they projected that they cost you in regards to employees, upkeep?
It's, it's a significant capital investment, but I will say that the customers have really enjoyed that service, and even my friend Felicia advocated back in 216 that we do implement the shuttle system, and I vigorously advocated for that at Highline, and I'm very pleased that we did implement it, because as Felicia would say, people need to take a shuttle, they don't want to be walking in the rain, or the heat, or the, or the snow, and, and we did that, and it's worked very, very well, and we, we see a trend where people are desirous of continuing to, to use those off-site locations because the cost is even a little bit less, so we, it has been very positive, and it has been costly, but, but it's something that we needed to do to provide that kind of service.
What is the projected revenue for the additional parking spaces, and can you go over, of that, how much does the town reap in taxes percentage-wise?
I, I don't know what those revenues are, but we pay for permits just like any other off-site owner would, whether it be Wayne Kirker or any other private entity that would have a permit for, for parking, I think the Planning Board Office would be able to answer that better than me or, or the Regulatory Division, I don't know, I don't know what the revenue is on that, honestly.
Sorry, I was just looking, you know, the, the financial benefit to the town, you know, if it was significant.
I think it's just the tax base of the real estate taxes.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question for staff, when we permitted Zero-Engine House Road, we did not put a timeline on the permit, I just want to confirm that, I don't remember putting one on.
That's correct, we did not put a time limit on that.
Great, thank you.
What's the term of your lease, just curious about that?
Five years.
So, that to me seems like, if there's a better, more desirous use, and someone wants to come in and buy it and build a beautiful something, that's sort of a built-in limit, in my opinion.
Yeah, in fact, there's, there's some development rights that have been reserved as to that area, that, that they may, they may turn into structures with condominium units, commercial, I would assume.
Great, thank you.
Pat? Walter? Fred? Yeah?
Mr. Riley, am I to understand that from these parking lots, the town gets no revenue other than the permit fees?
I, I think the town derives, first of all, I think it's really important for the public to know that Highline is a private operator, we pay federal, state, local taxes, we're one of the largest property taxpayers in the town of Barnstable, as well as one of, one of the largest employers in Barnstable. By way of contrast, the Steamship Authority pays no federal taxes, no state taxes, no local taxes, so we, we do pay our taxes as well as employ a lot of people, and, and we do pay exactly what anybody else would pay for, for those permits to park, but there's a bigger, much bigger picture in terms of the financial impact that we hopefully have on, in a favorable way for the town of Barnstable.
So your answer is, we, the town of Barnstable gets no money from each parking space?
It gets what it charges for.
The license.
For the license, and it gets the real estate taxes for anything that we own or anything that the other parties own.
Which is what the owner would pay.
Right, right. As opposed to the Steamship, you don't get anything.
Is there any other, are there any other questions? Okay, so we have two items on, on the docket, both separate decisions for special permits, we'll take the second one first since that was presented first. I'll ask if anybody would like to make a motion for the special permit findings on 2019-02.
I would.
Yep, once the findings-
I would, Madam Chair, so, number one, Hyannis Harbor Tours-
Well, I'll ask for a motion first-
Oh, sorry.
-for the findings.
Motion for the findings?
Of 2019-02, we want to put a motion forward to approve the findings as read, and then we'll read the findings.
Okay, number one, Hyannis Harbor Tours, Inc.
Excuse me, I think you want to make a motion to approve, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, it's late, I apologize. Hyannis Harbor Tours, Inc. is seeking a special permit to allow a pay-to-park, pay-to-public park, parking facility for ferry-related and general parking at Nine-Engine House Road, Hyannis. This parking facility will expand the existing facility located at Zero-Engine House Road Number Two. The subject property is addressed Nine-Engine House Road, Hyannis, Mass., 328, Parcel 204, and 1.57-acre lot located in the Transportation Hub District, parentheses TD, and Wellhead Protection Overlay District, parentheses WP. Number three, the request to operate a paid parking lot falls within a category specific expected, the ordinance for the granting of a special permit, the applicant seeks a special permit under the section 240-24.1.9.9b, in parentheses one, for a pay-to-park parking facility within the WP Overlay District. Number four, the revised plan has been reviewed and had an administratively approved by Site Plan Review Committee under approval date February 7, 2019. The property, excuse me, number five, the property at Nine-Engine House Road is owned by Andrew J. and Gary Beard, who have supplied authorization for Hyannis Harbor Tours, Inc. to file an application for use of, of the property of a pay-to-park lot. Number six, after evaluation of the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a detriment to the public good or of the neighborhood affected. Number seven, the proposal meets the special permit granting criteria of 240-24.1.2e, in parentheses one, in parentheses b, and parentheses f. As the proposed parking lot facility contributes to the travel, demand managed parking by providing shuttle service that directs vehicular traffic away from Hyannis Harbor. Number eight, the proposal is consistent with the goal six of the downtown Hyannis Design Infrastructure Plan that is promote, that, excuse me, it promotes traffic reduction and alternate transportation modes in the vicinity of Hyannis Harbor.
Great, thank you, so we have a motion on the table, and it's been seconded, the, the findings have been submitted, and is there any discussion on the findings that are out? Fred?
I, I disagree with the findings, I think that this permit needs to have a time limit on it, it seems to be at a disincentive to the town of Barnstable, the fact that we don't get any money from the parking, and that, that applies to the surface lots at Ocean Street, I feel that there's a great disincentive, the focus should be on our increasing town tax revenue, and whether or not that's done by eliminating the Ocean Street lots, I can't speak to that, but structured parking on this particular property by the RTA is well in line, and I disagree with the findings on that basis, I do.
Thank you, any discussion on that? Walter?
Yes, I have a counterpoint in that, and I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure where every permit or request comes here has to generate a specific income to the town, I think inherently, parking availability, which seems to be a challenge in Hyannis since I've moved back, this looks as though it's satisfying additional parking spaces which services downtown Hyannis and the harbor, and other patrons beyond Highline, whether it's the restaurants, whether it's the art booths down on the harbor, et cetera, there are many other considerations that would benefit from additional parking, in an area that already has parking adjacent to it, and this is taking advantage of a, what would appear by the plan, an underutilized former lot from a car dealership to turn it into pay-for-parking, which would benefit Hyannis as a whole. So I think inherently, other tax revenue would benefit by having parking to the community is, is the, to the benefit of the town, not necessarily what you would get out of the parking lot.
Great, thank you.
Can I, in, in sort of support of Walter's statement, regardless of an individual per parking, you know, tax, if you will, Highline is an amazing employer, a local employer, employing, you know, several hundred, I assume, in-season employees, so revenue generated from parking is clearly used to pay salaries, to pay staff, to pay for benefits, to pay for things to run their operation, so I think to dumb it down to a point where we're looking at a, an additional tax for them, where they're clearly employing and contributing to the vibrancy of Hyannis in, in general, is very positive.
Pat?
I, I would tend to agree with you, Steve, in total, we seldom agree, but I would tend to agree with that, where I come up against a big push is that there is an economic disincentive to the town of Barnstable, we're, we're trying to get that East End more vibrant, we're trying to do a lot of development, and the fact that we're going to lock this in for permanence troubles me, I think we should have a timeframe, I like your idea that it should be a five-year leasehold, if you, you have an investment, you make it over the leasehold, you don't make it over a perpetual thing, and if they want to come in and purchase the land, then they become a different entity and not just a lessor in this property, and I, I totally agree, five years is a great number, it ties to the lease, and let it be changed later on. Five years is a great number, it ties to the lease, and let it be changed later on.
Any other comments? Okay. So we have a motion and a second, the discussion has happened, so I'll ask for a vote in favor of the findings as stated, or with modifications? If anybody wants to make any modifications?
I move that we approve the findings as suggested in the readings.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All opposed? Okay. Great, thank you, that's for the, that would be for number two. That is 2019-02.
So we'll need a motion to approve the special permit based on those findings.
So I'll ask for a motion for a special permit based on the findings that were presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? And opposed? Okay. Great, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, Elizabeth. Okay, so that's 2019-02, and then the 2019-01. If somebody wants to read through, well, I'll ask for a motion-
I'll make a motion to approve the suggested findings for 2019-01.
Okay, so-
Could I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so, number one.
Let me read that, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem.
You've done enough reading for tonight. Special permit application 2019-01 suggested permit special findings. RF and RM LLP is seeking to modify special permit number 2016-03 to permit reconfiguration of the existing parking space layout. The subject property is addressed at 0 Engine House Road, Hyannis, map 328, parcel 241A, a 58,569,000 square foot lot located in the Transportation Hub District (TD) and a well-protected overlay district (WP). This special permit is granted for the western portion of the lot only. Three, the request to operate a paid parking lot falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for granting of a special permit. The applicant seeks to modify a special permit issued under section 240-24.1.9.a (1) for a pay-to-park parking facility within the WP overlay district. Four, the revised plan has been reviewed and administratively approved by the Site Plan Review Committee under an approval dated February 7, 2019. Five, the special permit application is being requested based on a proposed expansion of parking onto an adjacent lot, which is the subject of a separate application. Six, after an evaluation of the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and would not represent a detriment of the public good or the neighborhood affected. Seven, the proposal meets the special permit granting criteria of 240-24.1.2e (1b) and parentheses f, as the proposed parking facility contributes to travel demand management by providing shuttle service that directs vehicular traffic away from Hyannis Harbor. Eight, the proposal is consistent with goal six of the downtown Hyannis Design and Infrastructure Plan, in that it promotes traffic reduction and alternate transportation modes in the vicinity of Hyannis Harbor.
Great, thank you. So there's a motion and a second, the findings have been read, is there any discussion with regards to this? Any comment? Fred?
I would just object for the same reasons that I objected before, in the fact that they're not eliminating one car space. That Ocean Street is such a troubling thing, it is one of the most awful bottlenecks. And I live near there, and I'm stuck in that traffic, and I avoid it. So I'm objecting to that.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? Okay. At this point, I'll ask for a vote on the findings that were presented, and I'll ask for a motion. No, I'm sorry, we already got the motion, I'll ask for a vote. I'm sorry about that. On the findings that were presented on 2019-01. All in favor? Opposed? Okay. And now we have, we'll ask for a motion for the special permit for 2019-01, based on the findings with conditions written as staff report.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay.
For the record, I'll just object for all the same reasons.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll ask for the vote, all in favor? Okay. Obstand, object, opposed, sorry, Fred. Okay. And that's it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, again for your thought and consideration.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, on to the last item on the agenda this evening, for presentations is a regulatory agreement. And this is a regulatory agreement number 2019-02. This is the, this is for 268 Stevens Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts, map 308, parcel 017-, Liam Management and Leasing, Inc. seeks to enter into a regulatory agreement with the town of Barnstable to develop the former site of an automobile dealership into a car wash, with two residential apartments for employees and office space on the second floor. The regulatory agreement seeks waivers from the zoning ordinance, specifically sections 240-24.1.6 OM, which is office and multifamily, to allow for a car wash in the OM zoning district. A car wash is not a permitted use in the OM zoning district. This is a first read, and we will have a public hearing on this, so I'll ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing? Unanimous? And we'll ask for a presentation by the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board, Attorney Mike Ford, representing the applicant, Lehman Management and Leasing, Inc. And with me is the President of Lehman Management and Leasing, Mr. Lehman. Madam Chair, recognizing that you have asked that we simply make a presentation, that the board hold its questions, that the butters hold their comments until the next meeting, I'll try and make it a very brief presentation, particularly given the hours and everything that you've been through this evening, so-
We appreciate that.
Okay, so, but we appreciate the opportunity to have the hearing opened and to at least give you an overview. So, a history of this site. Currently, the property's in the OM district. It has been the longtime site of automobile dealerships on this site. There was a Nissan dealership here, and then Mr. Bornstein operated a dealership at this site, Hyannis Import Autos, for quite a period of time. And then Mr. Lehman put the property under agreement and acquired the property from Mr. Bornstein. And in the course of that, and as a condition of that particular sale, obtained permits to raise the existing structure that was there, and to build a new structure, which would be a collision center. That permit went through Site Plan Review. A building permit has issued, Mr. Lehman is, was ready to proceed with the collision center. It is the site plan on the bottom, over there, on the easel. And in the course of getting ready to proceed with that project, had a change of plans, given his own needs and uses, and decided to seek a change from the collision center to a car wash. So, I'm sorry, this is at 268 Stevens Street, if I didn't identify the site? Okay. So, the, what's before you now is a request in the nature of a regulatory agreement. And why are we here for a regulatory agreement? Because our two options are either to apply for a use variance, to change it to a use that's not authorized in the OM, or to continue on with the automobile-related use of a collision center, which is already permitted. And the only other vehicle for that, as I say, is a use variance, and we felt the appropriate vehicle was the regulatory agreement. To that end, we had a series of meetings with staff, and we had meetings with the counselor from this particular district. We reviewed initial plans that we had for this particular proposal, and given input that we got from Counselor Dagwam, we made a number of changes to the site plan, and those changes are incorporated in the plan that's before you. We then went to Site Plan Review, and Site Plan Review has reviewed this particular proposal and found it approvable, subject to a series of requests, and they're listed in the site plan approval that was filed, along with the application. Mr. Lehman, the applicant, as you're probably aware, is no stranger to the regulatory boards here in the town of Barnstable. He has developed and redeveloped a number of properties in Hyannis over the last five or six years. Actually, it's longer than that, isn't it, Joe? Probably seven or eight years. He now owns and operates five Class 1 dealerships in Hyannis. Many of those have come before this board and other boards in the town for their approvals. And all of those plans have been constructed, and I'd suggest all of them were constructed in accordance with all the requirements of those conditions. All of the properties have been improved, and Mr. Lehman, maybe fortunately or unfortunately, now counts himself as one of the largest property taxpayers in Hyannis, given the increase in the tax revenue that the town has received as a result of those redevelopments. But he also proudly now employs over 125 people, year-round, in the five dealerships in Hyannis. One thing about those dealerships, as he realized it as he was looking to them, they're all located in either GP or WP overlay districts, groundwater protection districts. One of the problems in the groundwater protection districts for Mr. Lehman and others like him is that washing of cars is prohibited. So unless you have some ability to take cars off-site, cars can be rinsed, but they can't be washed, this becomes a serious problem. And one of the major issues for this particular car wash is to take care, frankly, of Mr. Lehman's own inventory, and allow them all to come down here and be washed at this particular facility. So this is one of the things, and we would suggest respectfully, one of the benefits in terms of the town, by providing an additional car wash in this town, where not only dealers, but members of the public can go and get a car washed, in an area of town where the groundwater protection overlay district allows for this to occur. It doesn't allow for it to occur in any of the areas where any of the dealerships are located currently in downtown Hyannis. That's the irony of our business zones, which allow our car dealerships are in the groundwater protection zones that don't allow car washing. So that's one of the things that is driving this particular application and change. Joe, if you'd put up just briefly the two elevations. So the bottom one is the elevation for the collision center, which I indicated, for which there is a building permit that's currently issued.
We can't see the-
And the top one, I'm sorry?
I apologize, we can't see the bottom one.
All right, we'll get it up. Oh, is that what you were saying previously, Fred? You couldn't see the bottom one? I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
If we, if he's, if-
You gotta use the microphone, Joe, if you're gonna actually address the meeting, so.
Sorry about that.
So there's no confusion? I don't know how I'm gonna do this, but-
That's okay.
There's no confusion. This plan is only to demonstrate the proximity and the location. The building, I think Elizabeth would probably kill me if I told you it was approved, the building image is not what's approved, we do have workings on that, but in a haste to get this done, I just had this one printed, just to show you where the entrances and exit were, what the landscaping is. So I don't know if you get a better view of that.
That's good.
But in general, Stevens is closed off, and Mitchell is the only entrance and exit. Building size that's there now is the size that we have permitted, which is about 11,700 feet.
Right, they're comparable sizes. So, as Mr. Lehman has indicated, the collision center is a comparable size to the car wash building that we're now proposing. However, the car wash design is a much different design, much to the pleasure, frankly, of staff that we've been working with, and others that we've been working with in town on it. It is in the dip, and so what we've tried to do is come up with a design that was much more in keeping with the dip guidelines for building. And it also employs solar panels on the sun side of the building for renewable energy. And we included a couple of employee apartments upstairs, so that we had some housing that we could also provide, as well as some office space in the building. So we tried to make it a mixed-use site, we tried to change the architecture of the building to fit more in with the site itself, and we think we've achieved that with this particular building design. So, all of this would be allowed, except for the use of a car wash. And so the sole issue that we need regulatory relief on is that use issue. So one of the things that we were asked to do at Site Plan by the DPW Department was to, and I'll quote, "For a review of traffic management, an ITE memo for existing and proposed traffic is requested." And so Mr. Lehman retained the services of VHB Engineering, and asked them to prepare a traffic memo that would take a look at the traffic generation, the traffic distribution, level of service, and the safety issues surrounding that. And that memo's now filed, I think, Madam Chairman, that the DPW has not had an opportunity yet to-
Correct.
-generate comments, and so you're gonna be getting some comments, obviously, from town staff. But I will tell you, and what I want to make sure that I emphasize this evening, is that, like other projects that Mr. Lehman has been involved in, there are a couple of areas that in 2026, giving a full build-out, and they did take in background development of other things that might get built in the area, and we tried to plug it all in to give you a true picture, that there are some things that could be done in terms of traffic mitigation. Not only traffic generated by this, but just traffic generated as a whole in that particular area. And what I wanted to report to you is that we view the regulatory agreement process as a negotiation. That's what the ordinance says, it's to be negotiated with the planning board. And so I wanted to inform you tonight that Mr. Lehman is ready to reach out. We indicated in the traffic memo that we're prepared to sit down with the town and come up with, if there is a need, as there appears to be, some things in terms of the safety issues of traffic in this area. Safety issues, even if nothing's built there, that are problems out there right now, he's willing to help, and willing to make that part of the regulatory agreement, and make those conditions of the regulatory agreement. All that go to the issue of whether or not there is some public good that will be coming out of this in exchange for what Mr. Lehman is looking for in terms of allevia, of exception in terms of the use. So, there's work to be done in that particular area, and we're willing to do it. We think that that work can be done during the continuance period, and we look forward to working with the DPW. We also look forward to working with neighbors. We hadn't heard anything on this particular project until, all of a sudden, in the last several days, we got, Mr. Lehman got calls from butters saying, "We're getting calls from people." Who are they? What is, we don't really know, we're getting all this anonymous stuff being sent to us, we're being called and asked to come to a hearing." Joe has indicated to me, let's get a list of everybody, just as he's done in other projects, let's invite them all out to the site, or to one of the dealerships close by, let's talk about it, let's figure out what their issues are, and see if we can resolve them. So we're gonna try and do that also during this continuance period. We will reach out, we will try and talk to every one of those abutters, and see if we can find out what those issues are. Because up until this point, we didn't realize that there were issues here, we thought that everyone would appreciate the better-looking building, as opposed to the collision center. But it is Mr. Lehman's intention, he's bought the property, he's got a major investment, he's gonna proceed with one of the projects, and he thinks that the project that's before you tonight is a far better one in the long term. Maybe it needs some tweaks, maybe it needs some conditions in terms of traffic, or adjustments on the plan to satisfy the abutters, but we're willing to enter into that negotiation and make it work. So that's our message to you tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you very much. As we had stated at the beginning of this long agenda-
Yes.
-we wanted to open the public hearing, and then also allow you to make a- We wanted to open the public hearing and then also allow you to make a presentation to the applicant.
And we appreciate that opportunity. I know Mr. Laham has things he wants to tell the board, too, but.
As part of the presentation? Okay.
You wanna say something tonight, Joe?
I do. First, thank you for taking the time tonight. I know it was a rather exhausting evening for all of us. And that was a tough day, I'm sure. So many of the things that Mike said, I won't repeat. But I will say that 150 full-time staff members, we pay a quarter of a million dollars in real estate taxes. Not maybe. That's what we pay. $175,000 in excise taxes. That's what we paid. We're not here to make anyone's life difficult. In the majority of our plans and permits we've submitted, we have doubled, tripled, and even quadrupled the tax base. So if you wanna have investments in the community, we wanna work with the community. I think this board, as well as all the boards, have worked with us very favorably, and we appreciate that. We certainly don't wanna upset the neighbors. They're my customers as well as our neighbors, right? So the last thing I'm gonna do is have any neighbor think that this is not a good idea. Now, I apologize for my brothers who's decided to make this a mess for us. One person has called up all the neighbors and scared the dickens out of them. On Sunday, he called them and he went to them. I don't think that's fair play, and I don't think this board should let one person or two people change the, alter the minds of the people without hearing the facts. So we will go out and reach out to everyone that sent a letter in. We received copies of those letters. The person that did it didn't show. Show his attorneys here to try and make a mess of the place.
Understandable.
But at the end of the day, we are not gonna upset our neighbors. And we're not gonna let this board be put in a position that the neighbors don't think this is a good thing. We have a collision center permitted, and we don't, we don't think the collision center is the answer. We think this is, for all the reasons Mike stated. And again, I said I'd be brief. I have a lot more, but I do appreciate.
And we understand, and.
I appreciate it.
And as we had stated, we really wanted to just keep this to the applicant.
Yep.
I'm done.
Presentation.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
The public hearing is still open, and it will continue on to.
Absolutely, we understand that.
As well as board discussion and questions from the board. I will ask, just to make sure that we've got it down for March 11th is the next, is our next meeting.
Okay.
Can.
Mary? We might just wanna query the board availability on the 11th.
For March 11th? Okay. Who will be here on the 11th? You will be? You will not? Will you be here on the 11th? I will not be here on the 11th.
Oh, okay, so that's two.
So we're gonna miss three people. Steve Hellman will be back. So we'll, so should we, should we postpone this until?
I would think so.
We can't do it, right?
Yeah.
And besides, I was gonna ask if we could extend it another week, because by the time we reach out to the neighbors.
You wanna do the public.
We need a few more weeks. I mean, look, this is not an overnight sensation.
We've got a roll of our sleeves here.
We're willing to work with everybody. We don't wanna.
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving this into the March 25th.
Okay, that's perfect.
Meeting?
That's perfect.
Does that work?
Well, for us, it's good.
Okay. Paul, is that, does that work for our agenda?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And attendance? I mean, is it, are we gonna have the same?
Yeah, I think attendance at that point is not an issue.
I'll definitely be here.
Yeah, we'll all, yeah.
Fred, are you here? No, okay.
We wanted to just try and keep this to just the applicant presenting.
Yeah, 'cause the abutters aren't here, so.
Sure. Go ahead. No?
Mike or Joe, either one of you. The preference is to do the car wash. That seems to be your preference. Environmentally, water is a big issue on the Cape, and it is a tremendous issue overall. Are you planning to do mitigation on water that goes into the septic sewer or system? Is that a recycling process?
Yeah. We have a recycling system, and you'll hear more on that at the next public hearing. I didn't get into all that this evening, but there's a water recycling system. It's connected to the sewer that the property is, and we'll explain to you how all that works.
Thank you.
We think we've got a handle on it.
That was really my big concern.
Thank you very much.
I move that we continue the public hearing until the 25th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing us to open. We appreciate it.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Sorry for the long wait as well. Just with regards to the rest of the agenda, we've got some correspondence here for Chapter 91 notices, both for Vineyard Winds and 150 East Bay Road. And members not reasonably anticipated by, or matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, just wanted to acknowledge Fred LaSalva's last meeting this is tonight, and we thank you for your service. Okay, could I have a motion?
Can I make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chair?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.